All right, we're good?
Yep.
Okay, so let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let's all stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go ahead and have road calls. So in attendance, we have Bob, Ed, Doug, Carol, and Flavia. I need a motion for the approval of the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So let's go ahead and public comments. And just a reminder, if you can just... You got... You good? Oh, I can hear you. Three minutes and four...
There's multiple people signed up for the same topic.
Okay.
Just letting you know.
All right.
All right. I do have one, after we're done with the in-person comments, I do have one to read into the record. So first, we have Judy Peek regarding the new building.
Judy Peek.
Judy Peek.
No, we'll just keep the comments. Good afternoon. Judy Peek, Eagle Point. I come to this board this afternoon to ask that y'all really consider that the property we have in Gateway and how much we're going to spend on these buildings and how much it's going to cost this community. And we have all this that's already here. There's so many empty buildings, and why would we not utilize them? So today, I would ask that y'all would consider what we already have and utilize it. I think it's in the best interest of this community and the people that elect you out. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Ellen, is it Caitlin regarding the dog park?
Eileen Caitlin is my name.
Oh, Eileen, sorry.
Glad to see everyone. Continuing the...
Wait, can you please hold until you get to the microphone?
Okay.
And then state your name again.
Sure.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Continuing the conversation that was... I was here last meeting. My name's Eileen Caitlin, for the record. I'm a resident of Pinecrest. And I know there's a lot in the meeting. I'll try to be brief. I'm following up to talk about comments that were made at the end of last meeting. I had to leave early to get back to work, so I couldn't stay through the whole meeting. First one is that there were comments made at the end of the last board meeting that were to this point of why do residents wait till the last minute? That the decision to make the... To move to the dog park was already made. It was a done deal. Why are residents waiting till the last minute to bring up concerns about it? I'm kind of counter disputing that narrative. I'm going to be providing a letter to be read into the minutes. This is dated January 15th from the Pinecrest Homeowners Association. This was sent by certified mail. The homeowners association had no formal response to this letter. There was an informal outreach from, I believe it was Ed Moore from the Parks Committee, did reach out to one of our homeowners association representatives, and they talked about it, and they said, "It's a done deal. The park is moving." And there was not much we could do about it. So there was no formal communication to us. There was no opportunities to provide feedback until that first meeting in February that was held during the evening time. And at that time, there was standing room only in here, and there was overwhelming feedback that this was not... Not the homeowners in the area were not in agreement with moving the park. At that time, there'd been no sound study done. There'd been no survey done or effort to get feedback from the community. So now that we're trying to follow the process, we're not waiting till the last minute. The survey has been done. The sound study has been done, and we're here back today talking about it, not because it's the last minute, not because we're waiting, it's because we're trying to be involved in this decision. Another point I'd like to make in this heavy-packed agenda, there's 500 pages in the attachment. I want to pay attention to the 14-page PDF presentation on how parks and recreation amenities will improve the well-being of the community and will have positive impact on property values. That's coming from your agenda and your presentation. I ask you, the supervisory board, if you want the taxpayers to buy into that concept, I ask you demonstrate leadership, demonstrate a commitment to solid planning, demonstrate that you value our land, and you provide effective communication with the taxpayers. And my last point, there was a comment made at the end of the supervisors' meeting last meeting, two weeks ago.
Eileen, I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. At that meeting, it was said the fun park would just be a piece of expensive grass once the amenities are gone, and I found that very disheartening. And I'd like to invite each and every one of you and everyone in this room, Saturday morning, 8:00 AM, yoga as soon as spring break is over. I invite you to all come and participate and appreciate the fact that it's not just an expensive piece of grass.
Thank you.
Here's the letter to be read into the record.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Cindy Clyburn regarding status of the dog park.
Now, I'm not wanting to beat a dead horse, and it sounds like this dog park has been talked to death in multiple meetings. I was curious as...
Can you just state your name for the...
Cindy Clyburn, Eagle Point. I just wondered if anybody... I've not seen any information on the survey results and what the people voted. And I was wondering if anyone could answer that. I mean, I know this is not a question and answer, but that's really kind of where I'm at. I have seen the proposed dog park utilized for yoga classes and for just families and baseball practice, for the little leagues that are, you know, starting. And, you know, it gets utilized a lot more than you may or may not know. Coming in and out of that gate, I see it. So I just wanted to put that out there, that this is not, as she so eloquently stated, just a useless piece, expensive piece of land for all of us that do use it for, you know, family purposes and picnics and whatever. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Whitney Tinsley regarding the fun park.
Hi, Whitney Tinsley, Eagle Point. I wanted to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to address you on the Gateway Fun Park. I had to leave work early today to be here. Addressing the board or the Parks and Rec is really not an easy task for working folks, so I did take time off to do that. That's how passionate I feel about this. Zoom call doesn't work, as some other members keep telling me. Well, join in on a Zoom. That's also during my work time. My boss doesn't really appreciate that. But anyway, so it's very hard for working folk to get here. I just want you to know, I've lived in my home here since 1990. We purchased our lot and built our home due to the proximity to that fun park. We've raised three children who spent countless hours there. They've had numerous friends who would ride their bikes to play at the park, coming from various communities all over Gateway. Once they were older, those kids also chose to drive there and still hang out at the park. It's always been a very safe place for kids to hang out here within Gateway, and we've had numerous birthday parties there as well. We've seen the highs and lows of the park due to the lack of the maintenance by the district. There've been times when there would be caution tape around the play equipment for weeks, all the while unsupervised children playing on it. The mowing and upkeep of the area is another story. I've called the district numerous times to see when the field would be mowed, as I don't like walking through that field with grass up to my knees. Always concerned also about the fire ants getting out of control in that field when there's lack of maintenance to it. Children nor adults should have to fear walking through an empty field, which is part of a play area. It seems for the last while that this park has not been an area of high priority for the district. The park is used daily by people from all over Gateway just for pleasure, or multiple people giving individual and team instruction, not to mention families out there flying kites, racing remote-controlled cars, or kids learning to ride their bicycles. And as she stated, I've even started going to the yoga on Saturday mornings. I've met some very lovely ladies who I consider friends now. You should come join us. And it seems that the few who complained about the noise coming from the park, the basketball court situation, got their wish, as the court is not fit for anyone to actually play a game of basketball. I was one who came and addressed the board in support of that basketball court. I live directly behind the park, and the noise level has never been an issue to me or my neighbors. It seemed there was another agenda to having the basketball goals removed. We love seeing all of the various activities and the kids taking place over there, and if there is any noise, that's what a park is designed for. There's been an issue lately, too, with the gates being locked up early or open late. We left yoga at 10:00 this past Saturday. The gate was still locked. On Sunday, it was after 12:00 that the park gate got opened. It seems like there's another agenda there that maybe perhaps the district doesn't want the park being used. As a longtime resident of the district, I am highly opposed to selling off of any green space, which we all enjoy. With Gateway now home to over 10,000 residents, it is more important than ever to keep green space.
I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up with the three minutes.
There is so little, I'm just about done.
Okay.
Not everyone wants an area with large groups of people in parking to be able to enjoy the outdoors. Sometimes we forget how good the simple life is.
Thank you.
Kids need to be able to use their imagination.
If you want, you can provide that to Chelsea and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Ed Ryan regarding the dog park. Doggy Park.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you again. Even you, Tony. Nice to see you. Just for a little bit of history, I don't know...
Thank you.
I don't know if you all remember or know, it was my idea to create the dog park, which feels like about 100 years ago, I think. Ed, we were on the committee together, the Parks Committee, when it first started. And we never really ever, that I can remember, considered putting it in a residential neighborhood. I don't think we ever looked at that for what I think are obvious reasons. And I don't... We live in Pinecrest, on Vista Pine Circle. We don't live up against where the dog park would go. But I feel like I'm talking for my neighbors here, because, you know, I feel bad for those folks that are going to have to live. Nothing against dogs. We have two of them, and people in our neighborhood walk their dogs all the time, but, you know, they are going to have to put up with something different. And I don't think that area is the right part for a dog park. Chelsea made a great suggestion at the last meeting that I heard, maybe reduce the size of the dog park. It's obvious you need more parking, because we're a soccer town and we're a flag football town. And since the day we were in flag football together, Doug, people have been parking on the grass or in the dark, and it's not safe. So it's obvious you need more parking. But what I don't understand is when... If you can reduce the dog park, or if you can move it to this big park you're going to build up by the pool, it seems like the two easiest places to move it, other than a residential neighborhood. And I hope you take a hard look at that. The other thing is that the survey that's sent out, I don't know who put the survey out or how it came out, but it almost sounded like people in Pinecrest wanted... Some people in Pinecrest wanted the dog park there. Not a single person I spoke to in our neighborhood said that. And, you know, these aren't people that would say not in my backyard for everything. It's just for this one specific thing here. So I hope you guys give a hard look at Chelsea's suggestion and the big part before you move ahead with moving it over there. And the last thing is, the Parks Committee person said pretty much, it sounded like she was saying, "You either move the dog park there, or we're selling that park." They're going to... Somebody's going to big a big... Build a big building there unless you put the dog park there. And we felt like that was a threat to our neighborhood. Why not leave it green? Does the government need that much money? If you need more money from that property, why are you building a big park next to the pool? Why not leave it green? Even Lee County is leaving some space green. They're spending money to leave some space green. So just please consider all those things before you move the dog park. It's good to see you all again.
Thank you, Ed.
All right. I have two non-agenda. First is Marty Mantenfeld regarding volunteer positions and notifications.
So, good afternoon. Marty Mantenfeld from Monticello Neighborhood in Pelican Preserve and also P-PAC member. We currently have an opening on the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee, and a resident at Pelican Preserve contacted me, and we were talking about he might be interested in volunteering. So I told him that when I saw an email blast come out, I would text him and let him know that the position is available and he should apply for it. Well, the next day, he sent me the email blast. He should apply for it. Well, the next day, he sent me the email blast that went out on the 15th of the month. Okay? I did not get the email blast. It was sent out by Customer Care. So I contacted Customer Care at the district, and the response that I got was, well, I asked first of all, do you have my correct email address? Then the response I got was, well, do you have an account with us? So I live in Pelican Preserve, and I have City of Fort Myers water, so I do not have an account with Gateway. So I would never get that email blast. So we are not sending out notifications to the entire population of Pelican Preserve with all the openings on the advisory committee or the subcommittees. Not everyone is getting the emails, because if you're on the City of Fort Myers water, you don't get the blast. So we have a communications problem there in letting everybody know. So right now, I know of no notification that went out to everybody in Pelican Preserve with the vacancies that we have for volunteers. I think the board needs to take some action and correct the situation.
Thank you, Marty. All right. Next up, Sandy Bodnar from Mainscape.
Sandy Bodnar with Mainscape. I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for the intent to award for the landscape maintenance contract. We have our four levels of management that's on this account, and we look forward to providing a great landscaping experience in our continued partnership with Gateway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one comment to read into the record. It's from Jay White regarding the dog park. Says, "Hello, I am emailing about the future of the fun park by the Lutheran Church. Our backyard buds up to this property. We bought due to the park and would be highly offended and upset if a dog park were to be put here. Smell of urine and dog feces, not to mention the flies and everything that comes with it. We will install legal silent dog deterrence if approved. We would really like to see pickleball courts, maybe a food truck. Look how popular Social House has become. Possibly a percentage of their income to help with park upgrades, maintenance, et cetera. It's a park. It's going to be noisy sometimes. We understand that and knew it when we bought our home, but most of the time, it's peaceful and quiet, and that's fine with us. Give and take." Jay, I don't know if it's White or Wit, and Lindsey Fitzgerald. And that is all the public comments I have.
We don't have anybody online?
Nope.
All right.
Can you read the letter from the Pinecrest? I thought you did. I did not read that letter at all.
Is that the letter that we read in the last meeting?
Yes. Yeah, so we received it in January, and it was passed on to you in January.
The certified, that we sent it out to the Parks and Recs?
Yes. Yep.
So the board's... Just, I'll ask that the board has read that letter? The one that we all emailed?
I was reading it again.
And it's the same one that was attached to the minutes? And the Parks and Rec Committee also had the letter? I think Carol brought it up at the last meeting immediately after. I'm going to ask you that you do not interrupt us when we're talking. Thank you. I don't have a problem with it. Would you have mine?
No, it's fine. It's from the Pinecrest Community Association, dated January 15th, 2024, which is when it was received shortly after that in our offices via certified mail and passed on to the board. Dear Gateway Services District and Parks and Recreation Committee, we hope this letter finds you well. We are writing to express my concerns regarding the proposed dog park adjacent to our community. While we understand the importance of providing recreational spaces for residents and their pets, the board believes there are potential issues that must be carefully considered before moving forward with this project. Noise levels are a significant concern. Dog parks often result in increased barking and playful noises, which may disrupt the peace and quiet of our neighborhood. It's crucial to consider the impact on residents who may live in close proximity to the proposed dog park. Our residents are concerned that dog park hours may not be observed. Furthermore, the potential devaluation of property value should be considered. And this is in quotes. Some homeowners may be concerned that a dog park's presence right in their backyard could impact their home's resale value. A thorough analysis of property values in communities with existing dog parks might provide valuable insights. We kindly request that Gateway Services thoroughly assess these concerns before making a final decision on the proposed dog park. It would be beneficial to engage with the community through open forums or surveys, gather feedback, and address any additional concerns that residents may have. Pinecrest Community and the Pinecrest Board appreciate the hard work and dedication of Gateway Services in making decisions that benefit the entire community. We trust that you will carefully consider the potential impact of the proposed dog park on the well-being and satisfaction of all residents. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to hearing about the HOA's decision and any measures taken to address the concerns raised. Sincerely, Pinecrest Board of Directors."
Thank you. All right. So let's go ahead and move on to local achievements and recognitions. Do we have anything, Chelsea?
We don't.
Carol? No. No, good. Advising committees and items to report. Pelican Preserve?
Yep. So this was, I don't... It's Doug's.
Doug's right there.
Doug, if you want to come on up, Doug?
Okay.
I'll let Doug Zaner, Chairman of the Ponds Pelicans Subcommittee, present the item.
Okay. My name is Doug Zaner. I'm the head of the Ponds Subcommittee, part of P-PAC. I know, Ed, you probably read through every one of the hundred and some pages that were part of the five proposals.
I fell asleep at 95.
I created a one-page summary. You want to put that up there?
Sorry. Technical difficulties all the way around today.
You're just trying to pull the document?
Yeah.
You can still go ahead.
Okay. What I have is a summary of the five proposals. If you look at the total, CMB Civil was 315, 671 MRI, EMC was 525, 467 was Landshore, and Cross Creek was 441. We took out the de-water, because we were not going to do this if the water level was high, so we were not... We're going to wait, as opposed to doing that. We took out the contingency, and we also had 1,000 feet that we're not going to restore. There was no... The slope drop-off was within... Well within specs. So we took them out, and the low bid CMB Civil was 204,000. Okay? Tetra Tech, the staff, Gateway staff, we have a member of our group, the Ponds Group, not the board, but the Ponds Group, who worked at Shellpoint and has done projects like this before. Said it was a low-risk project from the standpoint to break the ground and put... Scoop out the silt and put it on the bank, and then put coconut mesh on there, and then grass. That's why we recommend, the Ponds Group recommended, and then took that to P-PAC to do it with the low bid CMB Civil. I got some more detail on each of the vendors if you want to. Another summary sheet. Yes, Ed?
Yeah, Doug. Did you remove the deducted items? Were they bid items that you just...
Some bid, de-watered, and others did not.
How'd you get those prices negotiated with the bidder?
Yeah. It was called optional in the bid.
If necessary.
And then the second low bidder, which was Cross Creek, which was substantial, or the second higher bid?
Yeah.
Was Cross Creek, which was substantially higher than the low bidder?
Right.
When you deducted the same items off of theirs, were they still the second?
They were... They were $286. They were $86,000 more than the low bid.
So 202 versus 286?
204, 981 versus 286, 288.
So they basically dropped together?
Yes. And they're, you know, we've dealt with some of these vendors, Gateway has. No one's dealt with CMB, but we believe it's low risk. And with the bids, we're going... We recommended to P-PAC. P-PAC is recommending to you that we accept the low bid at CMB Civil.
Did CMB give you any references?
Yes, they did.
Somebody check those out.
Yes. Staff checked.
Multiple people checked them out.
Yes.
When you have a price that well, it's too good to be true.
If you have... You got... Ed, I'm sure you read that page. They had five references. None of them were on bank restoration. Okay? And we knew that.
Any other questions for Doug?
Yes.
Carol?
No, for Chelsea. So is the motion to award the contract to CMB Civil not to exceed 315,9028? Or do you want to take Doug's figure?
I want to... You know, the 20... Let's just say 205, maybe go up 10,000 to 15. If I have to do anything with de-watering or anything with the contingency, I have them, but I will come back for that.
Is that what you and Laura want to do?
That's fine. That was the recommendation from the Ponds Subcommittee, from P-PAC, so...
Is 10% been a typical contingency after bid?
It was in the bid package.
Yes.
They basically had that as a line item in their response.
My issue is, is the 204, does that include the 10%? Or do you... We need to add 10?
No. Right.
So it's like, okay, so 225 would be a...
Right. Contingency number.
That would be a number you would approve the contract as not to exceed?
But the other thing that P-PAC approved was a transfer. We had 105,000 about in our budget, and this is over 200, but we had a 99... Hold on here. We had 90,000 brought forward in our Ponds overflow budget, and we also had 140 unaudited from last year, which is 230. It's unaudited, but we're going to... We recommended 100,000 of that to fund the project.
That's how you would turn it funding?
Yes.
But for us, we're the contractor.
Yeah.
Yes. I'm just telling you how I'm getting the money when you look at it's not in my budget.
We make the motion not to exceed 2.25.
Yeah.
Welcome.
I will move to award the contract to CMB Civil for the Pond 36 Bank Restoration not to exceed 225,000.
And if you can include in the motion finding that CMB Civil Construction, Inc. is the lowest, most responsive, responsible bidder, most evident, and the bid is most advantageous to the district.
I was about to say that.
I was going to say that. Yeah.
You hadn't finished.
So we have a motion on the table, and I have a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Another example of Pelican Preserve working with their ponds, very inexpensive. I'll leave that there.
I heard that very loud and clear, Bob. He had to, right?
You did a great job, Doug. I want to congratulate you.
All right. So let's go ahead and move to consent agenda items. Anything that anybody would like to pull?
Now, I make a motion to approve the consent items, A through D.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Stephen Agapi is sit, but we do have Eric Fai... Fai? It's not Tina Fai, it's Fai. Eric Fai here to present the district engineer's something. And I will be your wingwoman if needed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just pulling it up, too.
Good to be with you again.
Could be with you again. As mentioned, my name is Eric Fai with Tetra Tech. The only main update that Stephen discussed with me, if you wanted me to highlight for you, is the Lower Hawthorne Well project. We do have the well driller ready to mobilize this month. So that works to be underway by April. A lot of these other projects, it's the same update since the last meeting. I will speak to my three projects unless Chelsea has anything else.
We'll, I'll run, we'll just run through them real quick. So the irrigation pump station generator, still waiting, doing submittals for that generator anticipated early twenty twenty-five. Irrigation enforcement improvements, we are awaiting funding and working through the consent agreement with Tony and FPL. The Griffin Utility Relocation, the ribbon cutting is the twenty-eighth. You've been, all, all of you have been invited, including the residents of Gateway. We have final walkthrough on Monday with the contractor.
Who's walking through that?
I am.
And?
And Tetra Tech and the county and the county's engineer and the county staff.
Is Cecil walking through as well?
I don't know.
Okay.
Typically, it's just staff and the engineers.
Don't forget the public works.
Yep. The Lower Hawthorne Well, like Eric just said, they started, they mobilized, they're getting ready to start drilling. That'll take roughly two months to get that going. Utility Storage Building, we're in for permitting. They're, they applied for the building permit, waiting for that back, and then hopefully mobilize mid-June. Gateway Admin Building is out to bid. All of you are under the cone of silence. We're going through questions and hoping to issue some addendums to clarify some items. So that's out to bid due sometime in April. Phase two, year two lakebank restoration. We, staff is exercising the weers every week, Wednesday to Friday, to try to lower the water levels down. Friday, as you know, we anticipated some large storms. Trying to work with Met Tower to see if they can mobilize with their work schedule to finalize those two ponds that were from two years ago. The FY twenty-five design, they're progressing, anticipated deliverable of ninety percent, which will come to you probably your May first meeting. The twenty-four lakes construction management, I do want to bring this item back up later. We have some fencing and ficus issues. We can talk about later on under District Manager Items. But the, both, those contractors are underway, and Daniel's Preserve.
Hey, Chelsea, really quick, FY twenty-five, what's the, can you, can you just? How many, how many ponds is that?
Seven.
Seven or eight?
Seven or eight. So we have to finish the design in order to get on the August request for inclusion for SRF funding. So we're trying to wrap that up this summer. They require us to submit ninety days in advance.
And that's what we talked about a few meetings ago.
Yeah.
Keep, keep in mind on that pond, twenty-seven and thirty, we've got to go into Pelican and lower that weir because those are below our two weers at Gateway, four and five. That's, that's on weir three.
Yep.
So to be effective, we're going to drop that water significantly.
Probably three and two, but.
I'm sorry?
Probably three.
Three and two, I would agree. Three and two.
Got to push it towards seventy-five.
And it obviously isn't going to do any good this week, so, but we're going to try to get the levels lower so Met Tower can mobilize. Public Works Storage Building, we'll talk about that here shortly. Eric is the EOR for that.
FY twenty-five design is six lakes.
Six lakes.
Thank you, Laura. Master Park Plan, Holmontes and Tetra Tech are wrapping up the final design, tweaking some things. That'll come to you April fourth, and it'll go to Prac after April meeting, which I think is the day before yours, or sometime around early April. Development updates, we're working through with Lennar on a handful of issues. Arborwood Phase Three, outstanding punch list items. Daniel's Parkway Apartments, Tony is working, Tony and Laura are working on a public records request, again, trying to work through some of those, if you recall, irrigation issues. They were proposing wells, to drill wells for irrigation instead of tying into hours. We're trying to, we're trying to work through some of those issues with them. That item may be coming back to you at a future board meeting. Santa Lou's Construction, we met on site with Lennar a couple of weeks ago to address some ongoing issues with Ed Tinkle representing the HOA there. They are going to start working on that and rectifying those issues. Centosa Apartments, which is now known as Garrett FM Gateway, just resubmitted to us last Friday. So we're reviewing Mose and trying to return those comments back to the new developer of that area.
The outer building, right?
Yeah. Prado, we put them on notice per your direction at the last board meeting, that they have until the end of the month to rectify those two valley gutter issues. And then, again, I anticipate that item coming back to you on April fourth, hopefully for a release of bonds. And then FGUA.
Well, have we heard anything?
Yes.
Are they doing anything? I mean, because the end of the month is next week.
Two parts. Our particular part of Prado, we're okay with. It's always work. But I got a call this week from the Prado president, the HOA. Lennar has now made an offer to settle with them. They're extremely happy. They thank Chelsea and Laura for the support that we have given them and their effort to get this done. So it's a dead issue as far as I'm concerned.
Good.
They're happy.
Okay, but no, the part where Lennar was supposed to do work that we?
Well, they have until the end of the month, and they did respond.
That's next week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They, they did respond and acknowledged receipt, and that they said that they would try to get those issues fixed. So, and again, if not.
They're really pretty modern things, Carol, but yes, they need to be done.
And then the last one, FGUA, we are in the middle of reviewing shop drawings. I believe they are starting construction on their side of eighty-two. But that, when they do mobilize on our side, we will have Tetra Tech performing CEI to make sure that they're building per plans.
Does anybody have any questions for Tetra Tech?
Nope.
Ed?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, you'll come back up in a minute. You get a break.
Please, thank you.
All right, so let's go ahead and move on to admin agenda items, and Chelsea, take that.
Yep. Pull up the Parks and Rec Impact on Communities. Daniel Potter is here to give you that presentation, our public, our public works director.
Good evening, Daniel Potter, Parks and, Parks and Recs Public Works Director. Took an opportunity at the last Prac meeting to bring this, what's up on the screen in front of you right now, in front of the Prac. And it's basically an infographic that goes through and talks about what parks do in a community and what it does and how it brings in more of a value added. So as we're looking at the master plan for the parks of the Commons, just wanted to bring some informational stuff in front of you. This report was created by the Florida Parks and Recreation Association, and it's, it's basically to show how adding parks or maintaining parks across your community add value in regard to home values, healthcare, tourism, environment, jobs, and public safety. The real takeaway from the report, if you get into it and look through it, it's very short, freed. But real estate markets consistently demonstrating people are willing to pay more for a home close to a park, which results in higher home values. Twenty, twenty percent increase in premiums for homes adjacent to parks, ten percent premium for homes a block away, and about a five percent increase for homes about two blocks away from a park. Change in average from home based on different park types, active, combined active, passive, passive recreation, are all dictated based off of the size of the park, anywhere from one acre to twenty-five acres. And you can directly tie back into the, the appraisals of homes based off of park amenities. So just wanted to give you a report. This is something that we brought in front of Prac and.
Carol, I think you requested it at the last meeting, so we're just following up.
Right. I thought it was a really good report. The Prac Committee, you know, looked it over. But I think it, it is also good for this board, too. So basically, Parks and Recs help lift the community. Wherever you're at, whatever demographic you're at, is going to help lift your community.
Does anybody have any questions for Daniel?
No, but I have one thing, since we're talking about Parks and Recs and stuff. I think I have found an amenity that Pelican Preserve does not have. And that is a playground for, where, where grandparents can bring their kids to with benches and stuff for the older people to sit on. We do not have a playground in Pelican Preserve. There's no swings or slides or anything like that. And I was wondering if you could maybe modify, if, if we're going to have a playground over at the Commons area, or if we just enhance the one over at where we're going to put the dog park at that one, just enhance the area. So to make it a playground for kids, but also where grandparents would feel comfortable coming and, you know, they have a place to sit down.
But you don't have to be a grandparent to want to sit down. Yeah, and pretty much.
No, no, no. Grandparents like to sit down.
So do older dads.
So do older dads.
But like a good example, like the soccer park here, there's playground and there's benches as well. So I think benches are going to be something that would be incorporated, should be a norm, but I think.
Well, anyway, it, it's something that Pelican does not have, and it would literally affect the entire district.
So let me ask, I have a question. So given that Pelican does not pay for Parks and Recs, so what you're saying is you would like to see it, and then when budget time comes along, will you be willing to pay for that?
Well, if it's a public park, I think anybody can use it.
You don't pay for it.
Which a public park could do not fan parks. We're not going to do it, I guarantee it.
Carol, you're skating on very thin ice. No, but in all honesty, we used to, we used to have a park in Pelican.
Really?
For kiddies. And it was never used, and that's why it was removed. But I would be opposed to them doing it with us in consideration, because we stay with our interconnectivity role, and that's psychosympathy.
I mean, we're talking about what, maybe twenty people annually? I mean, let's, let's not get crazy.
Right, right.
I think the point is, there's opportunity for multi-use, multi-platform type Parks and Rec amenities.
We used to have it.
All right, any other questions for Parks and Recs, Daniel?
Probably made it into dog park, huh?
No? Okay. All right, so B, you're going to present that?
Yep. So this was just a follow-up on the decibel readings and the statistics that the board requested. This was presented at the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I just want to clarify that. This totals scans by time of day. It's over an eight, like approximately eight-month period. We do have a hundred and sixty-four dog park, current dog park users with passes. And again, once on the next item, as we discussed, the dog park in the phasing, potential phasing of the building out of the parking lot, something to consider, these types of, you know, noise and use of the existing facilities. So, any questions?
Now, what I'll say, do you want to?
Not for me. Go ahead, but.
What I'll say is, I think what we've tried to do with staff, which is something I, I practice in my professional world, is operating on a one-three-one. So when we have a, an opportunity or a problem, we try to push staff to come back with solutions, not just one, but multiple. And then we, and then we end up ultimately landing in the, on the, on the right choice. And I think the, the Parks and Rec Committee has done a really great job of getting, you know, their voice out, trying to be stewards of, of what we're doing here in the boardroom, capturing feedback. But they're not always attached at the hip with us. So they, they may misspeak every once in a while. We're trying to coordinate the, those comments. But the reason why I'm saying that is, we asked them to come back with solutions and gave them a little bit of open space. And I think originally, when we were looking at, you know, the dog park on the surface, I think it was one of, you know, one of several solutions, but that one did kind of make sense at the time. We could, you know, move the dog park to the, to the fun park and actually be a bigger space. We could, we even have some residents that are doing, you know, dog agility and things of that nature. It'd be great to have even additional space. So I, I think, at least from what I understand, there was, it was never a done deal for that to happen. That's been stated a couple of times, but I don't think that's accurate. But I believe the staff and the board, along with capturing feedback from the residents, did their due diligence. And where I believe it's landed, and, and what I'll make a motion with in just a few minutes, is being able to look at multiple solutions and be able to come to an agreement that kind of works for everyone. So I think what we've heard is moving the dog park may not be the, the right decision. Keeping it where it is makes the most sense at this point. We do have a, a little bit of an issue in volume. You know, we've had the same conversation with the pool for years and years and years. We spent a lot of money in the pool, and the volume isn't necessarily there, but it's amenity that's used. So with that being said, I think conversation around moving the dog park or even selling that land, I think we'd have probably a very good debate about whether we'd want to do that or not. But I think it would be my recommendation, and I'll make a motion in just a few minutes, that we leave the dog park where it is. We still stay in line with our vision, which is, we want to enhance amenities, Parks and Rec throughout Gateway, which would still, which would include still moving the Commons Park, aligning some of those amenities to the Commons Park area for a couple of reasons. One, it actually aligns with the original vision of Gateway, for those of us that have been around for a long time. The original vision was that the Commons Park and then, you know, our, our field complex and then the linear park in between connecting them. Neither the Commons Park nor the linear park has ever truly been developed. So we're, we're moving on that path, but that, it connects those two, two entities. And one of the things that we will need to consider is whether the size of the dog park is sufficient for the volume and use. I don't think we, I think we'll all agree that we will keep it in place, but I don't know if we need that size to what Ed, Ed said earlier. The growth in our leagues and usage of, of the, the sports complex across the street has almost doubled in the last five to seven, ten years. And we just can't have people parking on the street. We're going to offer that, that space. Also allow for inti, inti, increase uses, usage, which translates to revenue for us. We have to make sure people have a safe place to park. So the, the last thing that, that I'll say is, what happens to the fun park? I, I think we, if it was me, I would push it back to the Parks and Rec Committee to work along with other residents that, whether you're in Pinecrest or Eagle Ridge, or just in Gateway as a whole, to think about what that park might look like in the future, whether it's a green space, whether it's, you know, it maintains some type of mini park. But there might be some amenities that gets, that gets moved to the Commons Park because it's part of our much larger vision. But I think that's something that we can work with the Parks and Rec and residents around the area that, and I, I lived in Pinecrest for seven years. I, I, my, my boys were brought up on that fun park. So I, I know the value, value of it. So I'm just stopping there and see if there's any other comments from?
I'll have one, but Ali, do you have anything, Ed?
Yeah, I, I understand what he's saying, but what impact does that have on the project that we're doing right now relative to the, the building? Can we do a projection of the building? Oh, I don't think it has anything to do with the building. I think it has everything to do with parking and the layout. What kind of an impact is that going to have on that?
You mean the fun park on the Commons Park?
No, leaving the dog park overworked right now.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because that's going to have a major ramification.
Yeah.
If, if we would do that and then have a plan that is immediately sent back to the committee of how to incorporate it into the Commons Park, then I could possibly go along with that.
Yeah, and I think we'll see that.
Short term, but long term, we, we've argued all along that we need that space for parking.
Yeah. I think when we get, when we get to the, the, the design, the public works building, you'll see in the site plan, they've actually put a contingency in there with this. So it basically takes half of that dog park, half of it converts it into a park.
I, I, I do have, okay, so you have anything else? I do want to touch on this.
So back to what you said, I think what we did during budget, we allocated two hundred thousand dollars for the moving. So when people assume was a done deal, it's because they saw it in the budget and that, but we were being proactive in saying, look, if this is going to get done, the money's already there. So we do have two hundred thousand dollars that we haven't touched it, that we were going to use to move the dog park that way. So my concern of reducing the size of it here is because we do need every single parking space that's here. So we're just delaying two to three years to then have the same conversation and have the dog park go somewhere else. So I would be more inclined on having the dog park at the Commons because you're just, you're just pushing it, let's just do it once and do it right, instead of doing it and we still don't have enough parking.
Yeah.
So, so that's my only thing, because a lot, and that was a lot of conversations that I had with the residents is, they didn't realize that there's a building that's going to go over there. They didn't realize there's, it's the parking. They just assumed that we had that area and we could have just moved it, you know, a little bit to the east, a little bit to the west, north. But there were items that were in there, then maybe we didn't do such a good job of explaining that to the residents, that those areas are already taken and, you know. So that's my only hesitation about reducing the, the size and keeping it that location because we need every single, I mean, I have, I, I have drone footages of last week and two weeks ago of the parking. Maybe didn't count the cars, but we need it.
Well, I mean, what I would say to that is, maybe that's something we think about in the future. My only concern is when I look at the Commons Plan, really the only logical place to put the dog park is going to be further in the back. And we have no parking that leads there. So you're going to have to park your car, walk your dog fifty yards at a minimum to the dog park as opposed to twenty feet today. Most of the residents that are using that dog park are older, and I just don't think that's going to be fair. I don't think.
Doug, you're going to do that either way. Are you going to do it now or do it later?
What, what?
One or the other.
No, I'm talking about for the walk, the distance walking. We don't, we don't have that today.
Well, I agree with Flavia. We've just got ourselves into a corner now, but the only option for the dog park is the Commons Park. That's simple.
And we already have a sidewalk there. Now, when we do the fishing tournament, so they can park. And, and remember, one of the concepts, we have parking there as well for the food trucks. So we can just move, the, the parking area will be four, so they can just park behind. And then just take that sidewalk behind, you know, behind the pump house. There's already a sidewalk there, so there'll be just a straight walk through and maybe utilizing the area that's.
But you're still talking about walking fifty feet at a minimum.
Well, the dog park is for exercising for the dogs.
But I'm just saying, I, I don't disagree. I mean, I'd love to have the parking there because I think it's warranted.
We can't make everybody happy, but I think if you go into a park and you just take a little bit of a walk, you know, and, and you just.
How many, um, each section, so if we look at not the, the back parking area, but the, the?
You're talking, are we on the design part?
On the design part. So we're on page four. If you look at the, to the right versus to the left, how many parking spaces is that?
Yep. Do the site plan where you can see what this thing looks like.
I think it's four.
Yep, find your site.
And again, here's the thing, too. I mean, there's also.
Because when we go out for the survey on the park here and start talking money, I guarantee you, I think that dog park being over the Commons Park might, might have a chance of getting some votes for the park. Otherwise, I think you're going to see that thing go down in flames.
Can you tell me how many?
Eric, do we have a count on the parking stalls? Go to the next one.
Use your cursor to show where the dog park would be on this layout that it would be omitting.
It's a better, yeah, right there. That's cleaner.
Yeah. Where's, where's the outline of where the current dog park is on that?
Basically under the bottom, the bottom section.
That bottom section?
Yeah.
So the road that was in, accessing this current deal, where is it ingressing?
Where, yeah, where it's at now.
Were you coming in to go to that maintenance building back in the back? How do you get there? So it goes around the perimeter?
Yep.
So then, taking that and leaving that lower section for the dog park for, say, one year, we could face it.
Real quick, because Flavia wasn't, so if you look at this, there is a, a rectangle. There's a white on the left, and there's a gray on the right. Both of those are existing dog park areas today. That's part one and part two. The gray in this, in this drawing is basically.
The large dog park.
It, it's. It's, it's the, it's half of the dog park converted into parking lot, maintaining an area for the existing dog park today. So that, that's, just make sure we're clear, that, that was all dog park today?
No.
No.
Well, I mean, there's a portion of it that's dog park.
The white part, okay, guys, the white part is the current parking lot.
Oh, okay, all right. I was wrong, I was wrong. So right, this is with the dog park being removed. I thought when we were talking earlier that half of that is.
It wouldn't be here, so Doug, so if we did half, it, we're going to keep this half here, but then you don't, you wouldn't have.
I got you, I got you, I got you. I was wrong, my mistake.
Well, to me, it would make more sense, more sense to leave the current park, take the dog park, make that parking and put the dog park up further up in that north end. Why, why have a separation between the two parking spot spaces? In other words, make what the, is parking right now, leave it. What we are showing as dog park right now, going to be parking, leave it. And then put the dog park up on the south side of the proposed maintenance building in, in an area up there.
The building.
No, leave the building where it's at, just put the dog park up there to the south side of it. That way you've got, at least got continuity on the parking without having the dog park in the middle.
So then like the homes, the, like right where the homes at Timber Creek at will.
Well, the, the, the building is going right here. And.
Okay, could you tell me where right here is?
My pointers aren't working.
I'm lost.
Right here on where the building is at. Go right below that and put the dog park.
But then again, you're, you're going to remove some parking spaces.
Oh, there's no doubt about that. But my deal is at least that's, it's, it's a little bit.
Better option than Doug's version, I agree with that. Sure.
So you want the dog park right next to the maintenance building?
Just put it up there.
Is that what you're talking about, Ed?
Yes, because why do you want to put and have a parking lot and have a dog park in the middle of the parking lot? I mean, that, that doesn't make any sense. If you're going to do it, take it up to one end to where in the future, when you move the dog park, the only thing you've got to do is fill in the, the void with that parking lot. Now it's continuous. You don't, the parking that we need for the building itself is minimal. So just go whatever we need, come south of that and then make that area the dog park.
Well, so I'm just going to, I'm going to play devil's advocate here, just so we can have conversation. We are talking about a lot of concessions for 150 users. 160 users, so that's less than four a day, maybe. I mean, again, I, I'm, I'm not trying to say this is a bad thing, but we are, we're trying to move a lot of mountains for an amenity that is, has very low use.
So, so that's why another reason I was thinking Commons would be there. And then I think the location that one of the residents proposed, and I think it was. I think that would be better. And then literally use the $200,000 that we already have in the budget for this year to do that. Because we would do that. I mean, we can utilize some of the fencing now.
The problem is where you're going to put it is in the back of the Commons because it shouldn't go anywhere else. It shouldn't have the dog up front. That build out is really phase three for us. Site planning, we won't even touch that area now.
It's landscaping, it's not. If you look at the, what we talked about, it's, we're taking care of all the landscaping perimeter, that's the area right there.
I think it's, it's bigger than what, what we're saying because again, you're, we're not going to have something where the, the established parking on the right is not part of phase.
Can you pull LIPA over here for us?
Or if you've got the, or one of the park plans, could you pull up? Do you have one of the?
So can, can I chime in while she does that? So getting, hearing feedback and from Prac, from the residents, and then again, to Doug's point, looking at all different, providing different solutions to this issue. Ultimately, we could leave the existing dog park where it's at, reduce the size of it because of the usage and turn this, this plan that you see in front of you into a phased plan to where you prioritize the back lot compared to the front lot. Phase two of this parking lot could be demo of the existing dog park with the shift to the Commons. If that's, if that's the direction. Or you can rip the Band-Aid off, put it, have, have Holmontes and Tetra Tech put the dog park in the Commons Plan as a future phase, move forward with this and.
Your trouble though is we need, we need, we need the parking now. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know that we can change that. We, we said that, so what we're doing is doing a Band-Aid. The biggest deal is, is to take it to the Commons Park right now and be done with it.
And that's what I want to utilize the $200,000 because it will make no difference if it was going to be at the fun park, which we had no utilities, we had nothing there. So.
Well, we can do the, we can do it at the Commons Park with the money we've got. And, and not, and not have to worry about a vote of the public on doing other park amenities.
Just so they can see it. Okay.
So the area that I spoke with Bernie, he suggested and, and looking, and looking at the site plan, it's, and talking with Holmontes, this, this could be a viable spot for it. If that's, if that's what you so chose, like, like Bernie said, that you could have the connection to the FPL easement and you would have your meandering pathways throughout the parcel.
And you have the sidewalk all the way there to the, so you just.
What about moving it to the north corner?
That's where the courts are proposed.
All the way to the edge of our property is in there? Okay, then what? So then there's going to be some, if, if that goes, there's got to be some traffic pattern to get to that point. So why can't the park be, the dog park be down there in that corner?
No, it can be in this.
I'm saying, in order, I, I, I'm fine with all this, but that's going to be a long walk for people. A very long walk. And the only way to get around that is if you, if you do a road around it or, and if you put a road, you got to put parking and then now we've completely just, we've corrupted the whole back area.
The, the, the closest parking lot would be like Flavia mentioned earlier, there's a proposed.
There's a proposed parking space right there.
Yeah.
And then they would be able to walk it.
So they would have walked.
It's, it's.
Well, with the issue is, is that I don't, if, if you go with the concept that we need the parking at here, then you've, you've got to go, just got to go to this, there's no other option. Because otherwise we're going to be doing it half-baked over here.
I, I don't want to do it in these scale. Fight the bullet, spend the money once and get it the way you want it. I agree with that. We need the parking, if that's really the priority.
The real issue is, is to make sure that where, if you set it back there in that corner, we've got a plan on how the roads and the drainage and all that's going to be impacted.
And to your point, if we notified Holmontes and Tetra Tech now of that change, they're wrapping up the, the master plan, that's an easy programming and they haven't gone into full-blown design, so that could be incorporated now.
So you want a motion?
And maybe, maybe if the master plan, phase two, three, four, whatever it is, provides for a closer parking to alleviate Doug's concern. I don't know, I can't see on this where it might be, but let Holmontes.
Yeah, that's their job.
Got to make a proposal.
And what we're saying is, one, just so we're very clear, we are not moving the dog park to the fun park. We're staying with our master vision. What happens to the fun park? We need to have some ongoing discussion. You know, so we'll figure it out. That's a separate issue. The, the dog park, the benefit of the parking lot outweighs the use and the value of the existing dog park is what I'm hearing today. Okay, now, then the question will be, where does the dog park go? Or even if it does go. Because I still think we spent $200,000 to move that dog park is a ridiculous number, a ridiculous number. I mean, in, in my opinion, I mean, we've got people complaining.
But the reason why?
And we don't know what the cost will be.
Well, the, the cost, the, the cost was, and this is going back to one similar tier, it was the turf. So remember master plan, we're already going to have that turf. So that $200,000, we may not use it because we will have that money on phase one.
I would never, I would never put turf down in the dog park.
And the turf we're talking about is either Bahia or whatever they use. It's not, it, we're not talking.
It's on a natural side. We're talking about different natural side, not artificial.
Exactly, no, absolutely not, because that was like, so, am I right? That was mainly the, 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 because I think we even talked about trying to utilize the fencing. I mean, the fencing needs to be replaced, but there, there's.
So let's, let's go through order of operations. If we all agree that parking is, is, is a priority, it drives revenue and there's risk and safety concerns, that that is the priority. We want the parking and, uh, at, at the area. The next question is, can we all agree that we will then determine what to do with, with the dog park? And that could be move it or it could be do nothing.
Well, if we took the first step of what you just said, Doug, where's the dog park there?
Exactly.
The first step is we.
I'm ready to make a.
We're putting a parking lot.
Wait, I'm saying that again?
The first step is that we're putting the parking lot and increase park.
What's the timeline here?
Where's the dog park go when we do that?
Yeah, it goes nowhere. I mean, I, I almost think it's impossible for us to do a simultaneous.
Oh, I, I don't think that's going to happen.
So, I mean, either, there's going to be probably six months to a year where there is no dog parking gateway.
But, but what's the timeline?
Or else you rush things and it's going to cost you.
What's the timeline of building this project?
What you have in front of you today is 60% design. We still have to get to 90% and then 100% apply for a DO because that's what this, that's going, this is going to trigger a development order at the county. We're going to have to go to South Florida Water Management District and get permits. That with the admin building, that took us a year.
Okay, so we're saying that it could be a year.
A year and a half.
Year and a half before we shovel dirt. So then we have a year and a half to be able to plan and design the dog park move while the dog park stays right here.
So that, that's what I was saying, like we'll have that there and.
And I don't have a problem with that.
That's reasonable.
So I don't mean to throw a wrench in this, but if you do wish to have it at the Commons, it would be best that we know sooner than later.
I'm ready.
I'd have them start doing that, doing the planning right now.
Do you want a motion? That's what I want, okay. Okay, so I'd like to make a motions for us to move, um, to go ahead, keep the 60% design as, as we have now and continue with this plan, move the dog park to the Commons of the location that we all talked about. Proposed location, give and take a little bit. That's it.
And, and I would also, if I could, if I could add to that, the, the proposed move to the Commons Park, but also allowing staff time to look at other viable options.
That's not going to be my motion, sorry. My motion is going to be, that's the option. I think they need a answer. And I, I don't want to have another meeting with something else. So my motion is going to be to move it to the dog, to move it to the Commons, the proposed location. Have you guys work, whatever that is.
And have a plan such that when this has to start construction, that one could be in the face of either construction or completion.
Simultaneous.
Okay, so that's my motion, you want to second that still?
Yes, I do.
I, and one thing for discussion, because we don't know the impact this might have, like just from the overarching design. It, it may prove that it doesn't make sense to do it. But at that point, if it doesn't make sense, we just wouldn't do it, right?
We've got the same issue that going past 30% of the park. I can tell you right now, you're going to get 1,400 votes in Gateway Greens, that's going to kill that park. I can tell you that right now. They're not going to vote for it.
Well, they don't vote.
They don't use it and they're not going to vote for it.
So I can, I've, I've kind of talked to Holmontes about this and they, they believe that that corner that was originally proposed could be a viable option. Yep, and makes sense.
What, what's, it's just open space right there.
Yes, exactly. And so, but there would just be some fine tuning with regards to fencing and connectivity to the trail and to, to your point about sidewalks and things like that. So I'm hoping that he would be able to easily make those changes and anticipating this coming to you on April 4th. They're very close to finishing it. He was just going through the phases.
So.
Okay, so. If, if the dog park ever gets moved to the Commons area, which I'm hearing all of you say that's basically our only other option. And Doug, your concern was parking next to the dog park. That there isn't ever going to be a parking lot over there or a driveway or anything like that. I mean, people will always have to walk.
Well, it depends on what.
To the sidewalk, to that edge over there.
Yeah, they might come up with a plan on how to do what Doug is worried about.
As the plan sits right now, there, it's, it's, I mean, it's all on the same parcel. It's just, it might be a 50, 50-foot walk instead of a 25-foot walk that they have now.
I think people would be fine with that, but they're not going to, 50 yards is too egregious. We would take our 150 users and cut them in half. So then we're basically spending $200,000 for, for 60 people to use the dog park twice a week.
Well, let us, let us pencil it in into the plan, we'll bring it back to on the board. If that's, if that's the board's direction.
So let me call for a hold. So we have a motion, a second, on favor? Can you post? Okay, 4-1.
So do you want to delve into the design of this part, this parking lot and the maintenance building?
I mean, what, what's, we're at what percentage right here with this? 60%?
Eric, you just want to give a brief overview of it?
Sure.
What else do you want? I mean, it looks like it, it is what it is.
It's pretty straightforward. I know I've spoken with Doug about some potential pedestrian access, making sure we have gates with pedestrian access right off the parking lot, which we can add those comments to the plan. We said FPL lighting, I believe. Yeah.
Parking lots lit, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And the ingress egresses along the perimeter? I just want to make sure that we're not driving cars and maintenance vehicles down through there with cars. Oh, that'd be a nightmare.
So, but we did have to make sure that the South Trail Fire Department could take their big ladder truck and make it act and have access all the way to the back. So you'll notice.
They could get through the roundabout, they could get through this.
So we did, we're, we're accommodating the, the existing Lower Hawthorne well and then the, or the existing sandstone well and then the proposed Lower Hawthorne. That's why you see this kind of weird U shape. This maintenance building would be anticipated for public works. As you know, we've tried to build utilities one here, we're growing with our utility components, so. And that would be fenced off that, and again, ample, ample parking.
Parking back there for our utility.
Yes, yes, sir.
So the, the.
Separate from the park.
Remind me again, how many total spaces in this whole build out?
256. Approximately 256.
So is the, the, the primary parking, this is for the soccer generally?
For the complex, yes.
For the complex. So this would allow those people, I'm assuming that you're showing car parking spaces along the fencing which borders the, the fields. I'm assuming those round deals are gates that allow them to go into the field?
That's landscaping, little landscaping.
How do you, how do you get into the fields without walking all the way around them?
We're going to have pedestrian access gates periodically throughout that park.
Okay, um, the area that is hatched, that is marked retention area.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that an amount of retention area that is necessary?
Yes.
So there's no way you could eat. Is there a way of forming the retention area to provide even more parking in that particular corner there? Sort of like between the two?
I would, I would say, before that, I would say, no, given, we understand Tetra Tech went out there and saw it. Ed and I totally disagree because we have seen it when the water, it just floods over there. I have been gone there during the summer. It is, it is a pond when it's, it, it, you ju- you need it.
It's a safety factor right now.
The parking lot will be on the water.
Carol, the only alternative would be to put pipe and ground, which would entail upsizing the entire length of soccer drive.
Okay, no.
Well, your problem is you have no place to discharge it. You had to put in a whole new pipe.
Yep, exactly.
Is all of that governed by South Florida?
And we feel good.
Well, right after the retention area, you've got the existing wetlands. So is there any way of moving some of that over to give you even more parking there?
I'm assuming it's sized based upon runoff and all that.
South Florida is not very flexible.
And it, and it also provides a buffer, truthfully. So I, I honestly think this proposed layout maximizes the useful land and keeps some green space.
Well, the last thing you want is you want that water that's coming off that parking lot going either north or west. You want that water to go south. We can't be flooding those fields.
And we feel with, with this building, that space and this building and the modifications, that will be adequate for us for the next 20 years.
Plus, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And the sheet flow from all this additional parking lot can be absorbed without creating a.
That's why they've got that acreage.
So are there any other questions?
No.
That was, I thought I read, is the total budget about 1.1 million? This whole project, everything, all in?
Uh, I believe that's correct. Let me just check the OPCC.
Think that's what I saw.
I think it was 1.1.
1.087 or something like that. Okay, I don't have any.
This is an interesting question. Is it safer to have pull-in parking spaces as opposed to it being more open? You know what I mean? I mean, it makes sense to me.
You mean angular?
Well, no, just like, the way we have it, if you pull in and there's a bumper, you can't drive straight through. You know, where it's parking spaces without bumpers or, or median.
Just go over, go over to public, you get that answered real quick.
Yeah, I know, I.
When you don't have.
But I just wanna make.
When you don't have those bumpers, you'll get somebody going out the wrong way.
Instead of one.
Just wanna make sure there was a logic.
Truthfully, I mean, if you look at the existing parking lot, it has some, I mean, we're trying to mirror what's already out there with some landscaping. Any other questions about this item? Eric, thank you very much.
What, what is, what's in there?
A motion to continue on?
It is concrete. It is landscaping?
Yeah.
Do you need a motion to continue on?
I believe, uh, Flavia already made that.
No, for the, the building and the parking expansion.
It's up to you. You, you get direction.
I'm, I'm clear with direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we're not gonna get to that year and a half unless we continue moving on.
Yep.
It's that simple.
All right, we will bring this back to you at ninety percent design.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Pleasure, initiatives and discussions.
Yep. So this, um, is, this item is really, we were supposed to have it at your last workshop, um, but that didn't happen. As we start into budget, um, we just kinda wanted to give you guys the opportunity to converse about any big picture budget initiative items that you, um, have been pondering or thinking for next fiscal year. That way, um, if there are specific ones, we can go and do some due diligence and try to get some numbers together for you. Um, I will tell you, I know in the past, Ed's mentioned the C C T V, the sanitary sewer lines, we've got a bid out for that right now. We've got another bid out. I know Doug and I talked about the, um, all of the basin, stormwater basin cleaning. So that's out to bid right now as well. Um, so those bigger initiative projects, um, we're trying to get numbers on, so that way we can plan accordingly. But, uh, really this is for you all to discuss any budget initiatives that you've seen.
And I do wanna ask the board, because I remember, I don't know how many years ago it was, but I thought we had created a policy where the basins would be cleaned every five years.
I, I, I remember that too.
The basins, that we would clean them every five years, that we would go on a rotation.
Basins.
Yeah, the storm, storm catch. The stormwater.
Yeah, that, that would be the policy, is we would, we would rotate, we would have them cleaned every five years. Now granted, it's expensive, so we had to start from, from zero, but.
Well, right now, we're doing, they're going out and doing the cleaning of the, of the basins, but, uh.
Only one basin.
I'm sorry?
Only one basin.
One basin what?
Only basin, basin four is being completed this year and we have five basins?
We haven't done five yet.
I don't.
We just did four. I thought we did five, but we're not.
We've only.
That's what I thought. That's correct. So, but my, but my point was is that our requirements that we've stipulated to South Florida Water Management District is that we have been on a plan, which has been a lie forever, ever, never, never, that these are doing, being done such that it's a turnover ten percent every year. So that at the end of ten years, you've completely done one, start all over again. We never did that, never did. So if you, if you would go aggressively to five years, uh, that would, that would be, that would be very aggressive compared to what we've done.
Well, and it'd be very expensive too, so. I just, I, we, I brought it up cause Chelsea had a conversation because, uh, we were at a Stony Brook meeting and they said it's been, I think, almost seven years since the last time it was done. And Margaret had thought, while she was on the board, that we had created a policy for every five, every five years. And that was, that was what we're gonna try to do, knowing that we're starting from zero. So I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't.
I'd just be tickled pink if we would beat every one in ten. And not let it set for forty years like we've done.
We're putting, we, the solicitation that we put out was to have the entire Gateway District, um, done within a five-year period. That's not.
Are they, are they inspected annually to understand how?
I'm sorry?
Are they inspected on a certain, to say, okay, this one is that?
What they do is go in and clean them and then they come back and they run the, uh, uh, the, the submarine with the cameras back through it for proof that the work was done.
But we don't measure, we don't do any.
Here's, here's one thing they ran into. We, it, just this one zone that we're doing, they ran something like seven thousand extra feet of pipe that we didn't even know about we had in the system. That concerns me greatly.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do every ten years, if that's what we're saying now is, is doable and it may be the best price, shouldn't we maybe come up with a timeframe where we're gonna do some inspecting? To, cause we might find that we've got one basin that's in dire straits that needs, that needs a higher part, like we did with the pond.
Your, your problem with it on this is, is that.
Location, I think.
It's very difficult to do it when the water levels are up, that you, if you're just inspecting or you run a camera through it, that's one thing. But if you're going to try to physically look at it, you gotta drop the water level down. And that means you've gotta drop these water levels down significantly.
Well, I, I would just say, if it's something, let's, let's maybe just have a conversation, because if we're gonna do it every ten years, is there something we should be doing in the intro?
The Pelican experience is that once you've taken your first look, okay, if you maintain your catch bases, you won't have a problem. Or if you do, it's gonna be an isolated problem.
Yeah.
Right.
I understand that, but we've gotta get to that point, which we are not.
Well, I don't, I, I'm not quite sure how far we are.
Well, basin three.
We now go through, at least once every four years, we see every pipe. But, and the cost is minimal, really, because we keep the catch bases good.
And I think Doug once said at a meeting that ninety percent of them never have to be cleaned.
Yeah. And we did not look at our interconnects.
Once you, once, once you do it the first time.
They don't have that issue, so it's gonna be different because of what we have and the mature oak trees and that's mainly all the debris that we have. And you guys don't necessarily have that, so it's.
No, we have plenty of them.
We have plenty of oak trees.
No, but where we have it, it's, it's, it's specific, so, yeah.
Our, our concentration right now in Gateway is to get basin four done and immediately get into the basin three component that's in Gateway. That's our deal. And that's essentially Stony Brook, uh, well, it's Stony Brook.
Well, we, again, we have the bid out for, it's a, anticipated to be a five-year, uh, cycle, all, all five done over a five-year cycle. So hopefully we can get some competitive bids back and you guys can plan accordingly with regards to budget.
And, and our history after fifteen years, five years is plenty, it's a cycle. We're just not seeing a degradation. Once you got it right, they're easy to maintain.
So are there any other budget initiatives you guys can?
From a capital improvement plan perspective, we've talked about that a number of times, whether we're gonna fund it at a twenty percent, forty percent, sixty percent. Is there any comments on, any progress on that item? Thank you, Flavia.
You're welcome.
My wife thanks you, my kids love her.
That's a, that's a money issue, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think you're. How much you wanna buy it off?
I was gonna, if, I don't know, were you, maybe not, when we did the cap, or the budget initiatives that we had at the Gateway Greens, remember when we did that workshop, was Chelsea on board? I, I almost wish we could bring that and give it to, just give us that back, so we can add it.
Don't update it, just keep.
Don't update it, just email that to all of us and maybe at the next meeting, we can, we can still have this on the agenda and it'll be easier for us. Either we add it, we shorten, or we, we, let's use that. So we have the template and.
Just to be aware.
Yeah, so we know and we don't have to rethink the whole thing. So just send us that and then we can just manually make our entries and then at the next, I mean, I would like to even bring it to the next meeting from now on. Every meeting, that's what I was gonna say, every meeting from now on, but at least it gives a start and not make us think like here, like we're gonna think about it.
Well, that's one looming variable we haven't adjusted. That's all. We know it's there.
Okay, all right, so let's do that. Yeah.
And I'll just say, you know, we, I think for the last, at least as long as I've been on board, seven years plus, um, we have made a conscious effort to, to start doing things.
Yeah.
Putting policies in place, you know, um, fixing infrastructure, doing the preventative maintenance, all the stuff that we should have, should have been done fifteen, twenty years prior to. So I think, you know, even with this board and, and members prior, I think we've all been on the same page with, we are gonna get stuff done. We're gonna, we're not gonna be frivolous, we're gonna get stuff done, but what we have found is there's a lot of stuff to get done. And, and there's, you know, we have no shortage of things to do. In the past, a lot of things we have done have been, um, beneath the surface, so infrastructure, things that most people don't see. We're starting to see things that are visible, like, you know, roundabouts and, and we're talking about some improvements in the community with lighting and landscaping and all the stuff that will be visible. I think that's very important, um, because it's getting more competitive to be a premier community in, in the area. With all that being said, I think we're going to, this is probably gonna be the most challenging budget year I think we will ever have had, because we've got some things that, um, uh, that will, will be a little more visible. That may, um, be more, you know, outside of just strict infrastructure. So we're gonna have to look at things from a priority perspective. There may be some decisions that we're gonna have to make around, you know, do we need to, you know, you know, uh, postpone something for, for a year or two years? If we're gonna do this or that or something along this line, so.
Focus on what we.
Let's just be prepared.
Focus on what we really need.
Yeah.
I don't disagree.
Because I'm.
I don't disagree.
Sorry about the cumulative, the cumulative effects of some of our decisions, like the pond, bonds, now we're gonna have the building bonds, and then we're gonna have the water meter bonds. We've got a lot of things that accumulated that are really gonna start kicking up our.
And you get into the reserves, you got the two components of reserve. You got the enterprise reserves? That could, that could be blended into rates and the rate structure.
All right.
Probably pretty easy and not, not quite as argumentative. But you go to that public work side reserve and that's one place and one place only, every year's assessment. And that's, I mean, that is just shot at every time. So it's totally, two totally different issues on reserve.
I think you mentioned it, um, at a, at a prior meeting, but, um, staff is starting to tally up the linear footage of all of our different pipes and put a number to that if we had to replace those pipes, you know, we do have aging infrastructure. So I anticipate that to be a, a large pill to swallow this year, um, as we present those numbers to you. So, and then, um.
Make it a small pill.
I will try my best to make it, but you guys have, we, Gateway has a lot of pipes, water, sewer irrigation and kinda, we've gotta account for that. But, uh, but to Doug's point, um, you know, we, we took out the, the twenty twenty-three bond series and we put together that whole comprehensive plan. Um, and so some of these decisions will, uh, come to determine, do you put it in your annual budget? Or do you look at that bond structure that we did and look at a future series?
Shall I, okay. So let's go ahead and palm tree trimming contract?
Yeah, I got some questions on that.
Okay, hold on, hold on, your questions.
So for our, so, so for our next meeting, what was it, Flavia, that you were asking for?
Uh, so we had a document that.
What's the document again?
What is it called? But it was, it was budget initiatives, it was multi, it was, but it was reserved, budget initiatives, capital, it was, it had everything. So I would like them to bring that document back so we can revisit and see the decisions that we made. I think this is three years ago, right?
It goes from fiscal twenty-three, this was where that started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were at Gateway Greens and.
So. Yeah, so.
Okay, so could you also include in there things that maybe we had projected to do in twenty-four? That for whatever reason, just aren't gonna happen in twenty-four?
You're gonna see it.
Push it into twenty-five, so that we get a full picture of twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
That should be an organic document. I mean, staff should be updating that on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Laura's got it.
Okay, okay. So palm tree trimming contract, and I know I had a conversation with Daniel about this earlier today, but if you, do, do you wanna go with it?
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So this, so this year, we elected, which Flavia ended up educating me, apparently there was a prior board decision to palm, trim the palm trees every two years.
No, every year.
Every year, on a two-year, every, yeah.
Every year.
Every year.
Very easy, every year.
Staff, we prioritized and you guys approved the hard, all of the hardwood trimmings, um, this year.
Not all.
Okay.
And hardwoods every other year, correct?
No, so, okay, so then I'm gonna, so I guess this is the confusion that I had and, and I talked to Chelsea. So the, the idea that came from staff was let's ta, leave the palm trees as is and let's utilize that money to trim the hardwoods, all the hardwoods. But then it's not all the hardwoods, it's only the ones that were noted on the, you know, for the contract, so it's not all of it, so.
Is it half of it or three quarters?
I haven't had a chance to look, Daniel, do you have it? Yes.
Two thirds?
So, so really was reallocating the money from the palm tree trimming to the hardwood trimming. So when that happened, I said, oh, Chelsea, let me tell you about what happened when we didn't do that. The residents were up here, cause remember it was the mulch and palm tree trimming. And we used to do it twice a year, the palm tree trimming, right before hurricane season and in November. So we decided to budget, let's just do it once a year, I said, but there's no way, we're not gonna be able to trim those palm trees.
And do it before hurricane.
Well, we have to do them now, and if you don't do it now, it's gonna be twice as much when they have a lot of stock. So I guess staff would like to utilize money in the contingency to, I, I have a different idea where to pull the money from instead of the contingency. But I believe that is something that needs to be done. It's really.
Is there existing, is it today, do we have marginal variation between year one and year two in our budget?
No, it's, it's, it's every, no, it's every, I think it's like two thousand.
We do every.
Twenty-one hundred, correct?
Yeah.
That's, that's a hundred percent, twenty-one hundred, correct? Okay.
We do every palm tree every year.
Yeah.
But we do our hardwoods every other year.
Well, so the hardwood, so this is the thing, we have an arbors report, which told us that we didn't need it to do it every year, because we actually, if you do it every year, then you're gonna get, you know, lion's tail and so forth, so forth. So we paid for a report, they told us what to do, I just would like for us to follow that report. So some were five years, some were three years, some needed to be removed, because I talked to Danny about this. If it's gonna cost us five hundred dollars to trim and six hundred dollars to remove it, and that particular report, that particular tree needed to be removed because it was either.
Right, whatever.
Then we have to do, like, so we already have the document, so let's utilize it, otherwise I'm gonna be very reluctant of paying consultants to tell us what to do and not follow.
When did that report turn?
Before.
Exactly, but I didn't.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. Had to do the.
Was it before you, Chelsea?
No.
No?
It was one of the last things Ronnie did last year before budget season, he asked about, looked to him.
Yeah.
We've been coming for a couple things.
So it's, it was only about a year ago that we did the consultant?
The conversation I had with Daniel is, the direction was already given to the vendor, it's really hard, the direction was already given to the vendor. If we can just, I don't know, if we can bring that report back, if, then you can have, take a look at that report and see anything that is needed on the, on year one, which was three years ago. Bring it forward, or maybe not, because maybe Danny was able to get it all in there, either or, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Go ahead.
And then my other thing is, uh, we did set a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for this year's budget for plant replacement, because we're thinking about doing verification and all that, and we didn't. So I would have liked to utilize.
We haven't yet.
Well, there's, what, what do you think you're gonna spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in verification that has nothing to do with annuals, that is just.
Correct.
Additional places, so I would use, I would like to use that money instead of contingency, just to keep it in the same lineup. That's me, I, well, we'll give you a direction on more how.
The, the question is, do you wanna do this now? We just mulched, or we're still mulching. Do you wanna do this now, or do you wanna put this in next year's budget and do it next year?
I'll say do it now.
Palm tree cleaning?
Yeah.
I'll say do it now. You have to do it like now because of the season, yeah. Cause the amount of, the, the time staff's gonna, mainscape will be there picking up the stuff, I mean, it's.
I just wanted to make sure that we got the number squared away, because I was looking at those three proposals and the numbers, I think they were the same.
They are the same number.
Huh?
They are the same number.
Open, oh, I don't think it is.
Coastline is.
Oh, open up, uh, the proposals.
Well, forty-eight to forty-nine.
That's, I don't think, I don't think it's correct.
Oh, yeah, the twenty-two thousand, yeah, I saw that.
No, not so much that, this is that, as, as I saw it, it's, it's, it's not twenty-one hundred trees, it's more than that, because you've got the Royals. And some proposals had the Royals and other proposals didn't have the Royals. So I'm trying to find out, are, do we have apples and apples here or apples and oranges? Cause the one you've got up right now, you've got the Royals in there and you've got, uh, twenty-three, twenty-one hundred, twenty hun, uh, twenty-one hundred and forty-eight.
Okay.
The other one's twenty-one hundred. How are we making an analysis of that one? We got apples and oranges.
And then not only that, Royals really don't need to be trimmed because they're self-cleaning and also Sylvester's, I'm trying to figure out where do we have Sylvester's? We don't have Sylvester plants in Gateway.
I'll have to find out from Scott, since he did the count.
Well, that's what I was trying to get to.
By memory, we did.
Where did this, what do you call it, uh, inventory come from?
Staff went out and counted, counted the trees.
Where, where did we, okay, I guess where are they at? I haven't seen them.
Oh, okay, so I see, the Royals is the sea pods only.
Do what?
Royals, so they're self-cleaning, but I guess they wanna remove the sea pods.
I'm assuming.
Which I could see that in Stony Brook, there is like. I could see that in Stony Brook, there is like.
Those are the Royals up in Stony Brook, isn't it?
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know if they're in all the proposals, that's my question.
And the palm, the palm dates, those are included on, on the mainscape contract, so it shouldn't be there.
Where do we have the non-Washingtonians?
Uh. We do not, it's in front of Silver Lake, they're not ours, we have fishtail ones. I mean.
I, I'd just like to have this, I, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable if we do a double check of this. Cause the numbers don't seem to be adding up to me.
We can go back and review this and come back to you at your next meeting. So Flavia, perhaps since you're most intimately familiar, you can assist us with valuation.
Cause if the one.
Trees and bees, baby.
If one, if one, if, if the, if the palms, the Royals aren't in there, then this is going to change because some.
We can, we'll, we'll.
So we can still go with this? Because it's the, it's by unit price, so we just.
But to Ed's point is, are we comparing apples to oranges?
Yeah, some of them don't have all the, the trees in the price proposal. Or at least that's what I'm thinking.
If the one that you're looking at is coastline and that's already the high bid.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, well, we, I mean, we, it's not, it's not an issue.
And you want, we should table this until we.
Yeah, we'll just look, look at the proposal there, one's got twenty one hundred, the other one's got twenty one hundred and forty eight trees.
Yeah, no, I.
And it makes a big difference because the defer, the differentiation is fifteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars.
We'll bring it back to you on the board.
I just wanted to make sure, first, I wanted to find out where are, are we sure that we got all these trees? Are they, is, is the count and inventory accurate?
It's, I would say it, the last time was twenty one hundred, twenty, if, if my memory serves me hot, right, it was twenty one, twenty one, twenty one sixteen, actually. But that's twenty one sixteen, I think that's.
Well, now we're, now we're at twenty one forty eight.
Because we, we have removed a lot, we have removed just the roundabout here, remember all of those.
But I'm saying, we, we went up, not went down.
Wow.
We went up.
Well, well, to your point, if, if certain trees are owned by the HOA, then.
Well, we also.
We just need to get that correct.
Roundabout, roundabout trees were added, so eleven and eleven, so that's twenty two, forty two. Cause we didn't have those there. Eleven was a.
I just like to make sure that it's correct.
We'll do that.
All right.
Ma'am, just a question, the, the number of trees, were they given to the bidders to submit and the type of trees because?
I believe, I believe so, the same map, the same maps were provided to all of the.
Who cares? Thank you.
Is that a GIS type map or just?
I believe, I don't recall, I don't think we have it on GIS, yeah.
We don't have that.
We're getting there.
We don't either, but I think we're.
All right, so then easement use age agreement.
Yeah, explain to me, is this as simple as I think it is, is that this is a document that if I have a fence on my property that is in an easement that the community owns or that the district owns? Is this retroactive that anybody that's got anything that's in an easement, whether it's a utility easement or a LME? They have to come in and fill out this form and do this?
This is an update of the existing easement use agreement that you guys have seen in the past where residents come in and apply for.
But it's not retroactive, we're not asking everybody that's got a tree or a fence.
That's the policy you want, then we will do that.
Although what may.
Issue me a gun for protection.
But I'll tell you what, what.
Cause people aren't going to be happy with that at all.
I'll tell you what can happen, and this is typically what happens, is when a person goes to sell their house. A survey will be performed and the survey will show encroachments or improvements within an easement. The title insurance company will list as an exception any encroachment shown on the survey. So the buyer may say, I want XYZ addressed, either remove it or go to Gateway and get an easement use agreement. That's how it can happen from the standpoint of a buyer. That, that, that's where I've seen it typically pops up.
It, it may be in more sophisticated areas, but I have never seen that done in Gateway.
Okay, yeah, it's.
These people come in and they buy a lot and we've got one right now with a, a good friend of ours, ex-board member here, that's selling his property and leaving.
It's already sold.
Huh?
It's, it's closed.
Yeah. And those questions should have been asked and they weren't asked.
Again, it all depends on the review by the.
It may be done in other areas, but my problem is here, we know just by the ponds we've done so far. And what we're going to talk about later tonight is there are some major, major issues on easement encroachment, major issues.
What, what drove this? The policy that was in place and the direction from the form and everything is confusing to the applicants. And so, um, past staff is updating it, making it, making it easier to understand. So ultimately, I'm just looking for your approval of this policy to be updated.
So if, if somebody should want to come in to do it, then this will facilitate that happening.
Yeah, there used to be the more like three or four page easement, I mean, encroachment, non-disturbance, subordination agreement. And now it's converted to a simpler easement use agreement, similar protections for the district, similar, yeah, and similar authorizations for the property owner.
It is going to cost the owner that's coming in to do this some money.
It, it already does, we have, we have a few.
That's, that's not you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for yourself.
I didn't have any problem with it other than that, but I thought that's what you're doing.
Okay, so the idea, you're not going door to door?
No, ma'am.
No.
Um, looking for things in the easement area. So it would only be if there's a project and you run across something or somebody sells their house or whatever.
Or if they want to put up a fence or something, yeah. We're not going to go.
Or by some all chance we're doing some work on the pond or something.
Right, and that, again.
Really?
In, in Khyra County, because of a number of people who were installing generators after Hurricane Irma. A number, a number of permits were issued and it ended up the surveys that the county was getting did not show side yard drainage easements. So some of community development districts, a couple I represent, said, well, wait a minute, we have all these generators popping up in our drainage easement. So Khyra County now adopted an ordinance that says whenever you come in to apply for anything, you have to have a site survey depicting all easements. And if there's going to be an encroachment, you need to get the approval from the easement holder. So that's, that's what's generated a lot of this in the past. And I don't know if Lee County has done that yet, it sounds like they have not, but that was generated in Khyra County about two and a half years ago.
What's killing us in Gateway Greens, because it's the oldest, is that there are numerous places that where you have a easement, specifically a drainage easement. Utility, we have a pipeline from a, a street inlet out to the lake. That when WCI and their infinite wisdom and their design review committee, when you went in for your approval for your house, you had that landscape plan. And if that thing essentially didn't look like a jungle, you didn't get it approved. And what we've got right now is you look down every one of our utility easements and they're loaded with landscape. But I think this one here.
Gateway Greens, by the way.
I'm sorry? The, 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 the big difference here, I think what we're looking at is more permanent structure type deals as opposed to landscape.
Like pool spa, pool spa equipment, AC units, generators.
Yeah.
Those kind of items typically. Then say pool screen enclosures.
No.
Yeah.
You want to make a motion? Oh, so we have a motion, I'll second, on your favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I stepped out, that's why I didn't know there was a motion already.
All right, monthly reports, so we've got admin, do you have any questions for, for comments for the administrative monthly report?
Uh, so again, I just look at Lee County Sheriff's Office warnings, warning. It's, I, I'm reluctant to even hire them for detail for traffic enforcement when it's almost double the speed limit and all they're getting a warning.
That's a joke.
I mean, and I talked to them today and it's.
They're not going to do anything, I can tell you.
So I just don't want to spend the money on it.
I think we're better off just getting, getting the, the speed.
Electronicity.
Do what we do, get traffic off.
Not our road.
Huh?
It's not our roads. We can ask them to put their traffic like that.
They won't do anything.
All right, what's that going to do? Just.
It's just.
It's just like a mess when they have to cut the grass.
The speed, the speed out there is, is insane, it's absolutely insane. You work out there along that road and those cars are buzzing by you sixty mile an hour. And, and the police said that they don't do a damn thing.
Okay, so then, so that's my other thing, I would do, I would do a reduction and just focus on the two issues that we have on the part of safety and.
So is that the board's direction to?
I don't know if that's direction, that's, and we can still have them come in on their dime and do their job.
Typical, just their typical job.
Yeah, their job, their job, I just don't want to pay for something that they're not doing, not their job plus detail.
So you want to reduce it to, to just the, the security detail?
You can work whatever that.
That's what we did.
But that's the board's direction, I can, I can notify them.
Unless you want to have, if you feel like you want to have a one final talk with them and.
I honestly.
Okay, explain that to me, exactly. What are they doing now and what do you want them not to do?
Issue tickets for speeding instead of issuing warnings.
I understand that.
And they don't want to do it.
So Carol, we, we have three different details. So we have a security detail where they patrol the, the gateway assets. And then they go in, you know, to perface throughout the communities, so it's a security detail. We have the traffic detail, which is strictly traffic enforcement, speeding, those types of violation. And then the third detail is for the enforcement around the schools for parking and the roadway and things of that nature. And so.
Okay.
Um, the, the suggestion is to reduce it only to the security detail since the request has been made countless times to the sheriff to enforce. And it seems like they keep writing warnings instead of tickets, which is the desire of the district. And so.
And we can still request as just regular taxpayer, just for them to come and just not pay them and say, look, we're having a, a, a speed issue on Griffin or Golden Boulevard. We need, we need your presence.
So on their nickel.
We're not going to pay you for it because we already do, so, so we can still request it, we're just not giving the four hour block for them to just sit there and just write warnings and.
Agreed.
That's, that's just my, my two cents, whatever you guys want to decide on that, it's fine.
I totally agree.
I just think it's a waste of money.
Okay, so hearing.
Yes.
Majority, yeah.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to do it, that's exactly what Flavia said. This is ridiculous.
I needed to have dinner with Tim, just. All right, so we have a motion, do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second Ed's motion of doing whatever Flavia just said.
On your favor?
Aye.
Limited to security.
And, and just remember, we don't have to write the minutes, so.
So any, anybody else for anything administrative report?
I do have, I do have one update on the hiring, I made an offer to, for the Public Works Project Manager position, sorry Bob. Um, and the gentleman did accept, he's currently in the Army? Navy, yeah, go Navy, all right, he's in the Navy, he, he's in Hawaii right now and he'll be getting out in April, moving to Florida at the end of April. So he should be starting late April, early May.
Has a master's degree and project PMP certification.
Yes.
Good, finally.
All right, Bob, and Carol, we're doing our best to try to get you somebody over there for Pelicans.
Flavia and I chatted about that today.
All right, so anything else for the administrative report?
I have some questions, but I'm going to dig in more into the financials, like the, and then I'll bring it back to Laura at the next meeting. Public Works, is that what it is? I don't want to skip anything else, yeah. Does anybody have any question for Public Works or?
I don't.
We're going to have some discussion here in a minute.
Do you want to, you want to have it now?
No, we can wait till supervisor comments, or you want to do it then or do it now with?
Danny, you want to just address it? Like, I think it's probably the same thing that I, you and I talked about.
Oh, so the light bank managements?
Yeah.
So.
Light management.
Yeah, LMEs, right now we're running across three separate incidents across Lake Eighty Two, Daniel's Preserve. There's some handouts that you guys can see. I got it. Uh, one particular property has four several, four very large overgrown pikeus trees that are exceeding into the LME. There's a twelve foot easement issue there. And then there's two other, two other houses around the corner from the exact same lake that has an encroachment of a six foot and seven foot encroachment with a fence coming down into the LMEs. So I think what Ed wants to get to is how we want to handle this and you want to give some direction. I know what was given to me beforehand, before I came on board for clear cutting all of, all of the LME, anything that was inside the LME to begin with. If it was a non-native invasive plant inside the LME or some type of item like a fence inside the LME as well.
Yeah, what, what started all this is that, I don't know if you all remember, but back in April of a year ago, we made a motion, five oh, to anything in the LME goes. We're out here doing plans and we're not even beginning to follow it. What we're doing is selectively picking which ones we take out, which ones we don't leave in. You have one owner that's got a tree, this, go back to that one picture, the one before that you just had, well, yeah, okay, okay, right there. You have, it's elective, it's very selective of how we're doing it. What I'd like to see is that we put some guidance for our engineer to go by. And what we're looking at is where, when you have a four to one slope, you go to the control elevation and we go two feet down. That's eight feet toward the light. Then we go two feet above the control, which is eight feet going up. So we now have a sixteen foot zone that's going to have fabric or something. Well, that top wraps into what we call the trench line. That, huh?
Yeah.
The trench line of where the, the fabric rolls over. We need to take and have a definition such that, such that the engineer can go out and when he's doing bidding of this, know what to put on the plans of this goes, this doesn't. So what I was thinking is if it's a, and our whole reason for doing this is that we got to be able to get after maintenance or after this is done, be able to get a vehicle down there.
It's too, it's too full.
You, you can't get a vehicle in some of these, especially just these right here. If you look at this fence on the right, that fence is seven point four feet into the LME. The trench line that goes down there is basically at the toe of the, the fence. It's, you can't build, you cannot build, build it correctly. So what I'd like to see is that we give a instruction, change, do away that motion we made back in April, that was, that was silly. Tell, uh, Kent tech or our engineer that for trees, trees, we would go as much as landscaping. We would go as much as five feet. If it's a fence, it'd have to be seven feet so that we could get a vehicle down through there and maintain it after it gets done. When you're out there right now, this looks all hunky dory because they get the water level all the way down three feet. So it looks like, well, you've got god awful plenty room. The fact is, is that the water level is right there at the edge.
So what we've told the, the three property owners with the letter, we've given them, tried to give them as much notice as we can, the contractor just take the LME and the trunk, and the trunk line, trench line. Is, uh, we've given them that easement use policy that you guys saw today and, because regardless, they're within the district's easement. So there needs to be some type of gratification of that fence line. Now, the, the, to Ed's point is, do we make them go back one panel, two panels, based on that, that footage that we're talking about for maintenance purposes?
For do, I was on site yesterday for those, I think so, because the gator, it's, it's a little bit over five feet, so you're going to need a little bit more than that. And that's given that he's at the edge of the water and given that there's no latoras and given that it's not mushy. So on this particular area, and I want to say this, I, one of the homeowners did reach out to me, okay? And, and it's hearsay, but I'm just going to say it. I would have a conversation with our vendors because the vendor is doing the work and it may not affect the work that he's doing, but there's maintenance. So when the vendor is saying, hey, I can work around this, maybe, but then there's a maintenance part that he's not aware of it. I, I just want questions to come to staff, questions go to Daniel, go to customer service. So if you can really have a conversation with our, our vendor and, and.
Let's reiterate that.
But just, it's important because then it comes to us and it comes to staff, it's like, and it's not, it's, it's just not their job.
It doesn't look like we're all on the same page.
Exactly, and I think that's a staff decision and I think.
Can, can you bring up the tree of the, the two lots that we went to that had the fence that was like?
Yeah, that's in there.
That was.
It was horrible, and this is the other issue, the fences apparently were put in without getting permits.
Yep, and I, and I guess what I hear staff saying is that in the board, that certain of the vegetation, these trees and fences are interfering with the district's like maintenance. That's the key component.
Twenty foot LME and inside that LME, you have basically the water surface level, the trunk line, top end of the LME. Trunk lines where the contractor is concerned about working in, we still have to have room on top of the trunk line and, and that's where this is intruding.
No, no, and I'm saying that the key issue is interference with our easement.
It is, it's actually not allowing you to.
Correct, and so the second, the second aspect is the track, the narrower track that follows the contours of the, of the shore of the, of the lake or pond. It's a planted track, is that owned by the district or is that dedicated to the district or dedicated to the association?
I believe it's dedicated to the district, yeah.
Okay, well, because again, if we own it and be simple, that's another issue.
But what, the, 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 the big thing is, is that it allows us to do a design and put on the plans and let the owners know before it even goes out to bid, you've got trees that you're going to have problems and they got to get, they got to be taken care of. Or you don't have trees and we can work around it. But right now, the, the decision that we made and the vote, the, the vote that we took was five oh that there's none. That's just impossible to do. If you go in, especially at these two ponds, seventy eight and eighty two, you'd be go back in and you'd be cutting down trees for the next two years that are in the LME that would be in violation of that rule we passed. So we need to get some clarity, because some of those trees you can work around. The issue is, is somebody's got to be making a judgment call, so we need to be able to give them a de, a definition on a structure, on a minimum, uh, uh, limit from the trench line. The trench line is something that's fixed. It's simply at four to one, it's eight feet above control.
Well, and what we're trying to do here, Ed, too, is, uh, one, we're trying to allow access so, uh, so staff can do their job. But really, we're trying to speak to, uh, obstacles or, or landscaping that is almost grandfathered, that's historically there. Cause where we, where we, where we start getting to a slippery slope is if we say, we've got, this is our easement, but we'll, as long as you're five feet or seven feet, that's where I think when the board previously, we said, look, if we don't set a standard and adhere everyone to it, then we're going to be onesie twosie and then someone's going to come in and plant inside the line because hey, that person is inside the line and.
Because hey, that person is inside the line, and, and I get what you're saying, and I think we can maybe work towards it. But, you know, it's, it's really tough, um, unless we have the right verbiage, Tony, that says, if you, if, if, if your fence or tree has, was planted prior to this and this, if not, we're just gonna have a whole ton of problems.
The trench line is critical to this. And the trench line in all cases is going to be the slope times that distance of two feet, whatever it is. So if it's 6:1, it's 12 feet. If it's 4:1, it's eight feet. If it's 5:1, it's 10 feet. But that establishes where the trench line's at.
But it's very clear, if you were, if you put something in and you were permitted, you would know where to build.
Same here.
If, if you were permitted, if you put a fence in, uh, and you got permanent, you know where you can build, where you can't.
Well, no, I think what would happen is they would come to us, we'd have to look at the plan, and if they were asking for an encroachment inside the 20 feet, what we need is some guidance to know how far they can go. Could they go five feet? Could they go four feet? It was like the two we saw over here. They gotta move back about seven feet. That's how far they are in. You can't get the vehicles down there. So it, it, it's, it just gives our designers and the contractors bidding on it, knowledge of how to bid it, and not wait till we get out there and then come back and say to the owner, oh, I can work around that, and you don't have to take your tree down.
But we're not setting policies for the, for the vendor, so to speak. We're setting policies for staff. It's gonna be what we need after the fact.
It's really setting policies for our maintenance vendors, so that they can do their job.
Exactly.
My main concern is this. If we're gonna allow staff to make the decision, then this board is gonna have to back up staff. And I think sometimes we don't do a very good job doing that.
Well, our problem on this, though, Flavia, is is that we made a vote, took a vote, 5-0. None. None. And then all of a sudden, we turn around, and we do a set of plans, and, and the engineer was here when we made it. He asked for the guidance. We gave it to him. We gave him what he wanted. Then he turned around and selectively said, you can keep that tree, you don't have to do that tree. Just exactly the opposite of what we said to do.
But I haven't talked to, to the engineers. I haven't talked to Tetra Tech regarding this.
Yeah, I've talked.
So I don't know, I can't speak of why they did it. I, I'm just concerned that if we're going to be more lenient, which is fine, it is, they're not gonna come to us every time. It's gonna go to staff, because we don't want it to come to us.
Well.
And then if it goes to Al, if it goes to Daniel, and they say, look, th- this one is staying, this one goes. And then the homeowner comes here and throws a fit, then I don't want us to go, well, I don't know why staff did that. I, I agree with you. I cannot have that. Either we back up staff, and then I'm willing, or we just keep it the way it was. Those are my two things.
We can't have staff making selective decisions that your tree goes, your tree stays, without having a basis for the decision.
But I thought, that's my question. Was that Tetra Tech? That, that's what I'm trying to understand. Whose direction was? If it was Tetra Tech, then I don't even want to bring staff into it. If Tetra Tech is the one that says they're gonna work around, then staff needs to address Tetra Tech.
I, I guess what we need to do, should have done, and when we keep, saw the plans, and saw that you have trees that are in there that are selectively in the LME, and we worked around, and then saw other trees that are in the LME that have cut down. With, that should have been a red flag right there. That should have been a red flag. Because a lot of those trees that are out there right now, the oaks, are in the LME, and if we would say, take either a five-foot or a seven-foot, those trees gotta go, and they didn't go. So the guy that has a tree that's in his yard, that's gotta come down to some, somewhat of an expense. Why, why me? And you let him off. That's our problem. We, we are very selective, and we have no basis for being selective.
So are, are you comfortable with, with then having staff have the conversation with those homeowners, say, because yours, it's going to either affect the work, or it's gonna affect the maintenance, and that one does not? Are you comfortable with that?
I'm not comfortable with.
I know, I know that. Going forward.
I'm not comfortable with the amendment, or them come in here and take that motion that we made and stick it up our x-axis. That's what I'm not comfortable with right now. We are very exposed. We gave sp- uh, specific, uh, guidance, and he asked for it, and we gave it to them, and then we turned around and did the opposite, and didn't do anything about it. Now we're asking owners to pay the consequences.
Well, they would have to pay the consequences regardless.
Just, alls I wanna do right now is gingerly change this to where we got some firm ground to stand on, and, but yet have some flexibility to be.
They can have both. That's my only thing.
Ed, so trench plus seven feet?
Trench plus seven feet, if it's a.
4:1.
Uh, it doesn't matter if it's 4:1 or 6:1, it's seven feet. Is, we, you've gotta have room to be able to get the gator above the, uh, the trench line, because that's where the water's going to be. So.
If that, well, if that's, if that's the direction, we can proceed with that. Trench plus seven.
Trench plus seven will work. But if you take trench plus seven right now, on these ponds, especially Pond 78, we're gonna be out cutting down a lot of trees.
And you want that, or you don't want that? I'm confused by what you're saying.
He doesn't want people to get upset. But I, I'm on the.
I'm, I'm trying to get consistency.
But, but I, well, I'm fine with that, but it's also a very expensive project, and why I want everybody to be happy. I want the entire community to be happy, and the project to be done right. And some of those, i- i- it, some of those trees have very aggressive root systems, some don't. And I think you're just creating a lot of work for staff to be looking at all of those things.
Well, I think there's a, you know, how has the H.O.A. not noticed that fences have been, I, I would imagine this hasn't, wasn't done in the past year.
No, they don't look. No. But then, but then, why are we taking it in?
So, yeah, why are we, why are we taking it on the nose for the H.O.A. that should have addressed this years ago?
Yeah.
Well, when they run our way, we take it down.
That's, that's how we said. We, we agree.
And that's, and that's what I'm basically saying. When they're in our way, but we need a definition of what's in our way. And that's why I say seven feet at the trench line is very definitive.
What was it that we talked about today? I don't remember.
I mean, 20-foot LME is 20-foot LME.
That's what I'm saying. Like, we're then now changing the LME, so.
That's what we said. I mean, it was a 20-foot LME for a reason. Even if you put it at seven foot, you're only gonna save three foot from your LME from the top of the, the seven foot. I mean, I, I think you're quibbling over.
You've got 12 feet.
At these three properties, if you do seven foot, you're still taking out fences and ficus trees.
At 4:1.
Carol, we don't.
At a 4:1.
At 4:1.
I know, because you don't allow it. That's why you don't have it. So, so that's why we don't, so going forward.
Well, that's, that's, that's apples and oranges. But this, this community's so built up, and we went 25 years of absolutely doing nothing in the way of either maintenance, or we know in this stuff has been a problem since day one. What do we do? We look the other way, because we don't wanna tip off owners.
Okay, so.
So, so, but my, my thing is, is make sure we clarify this. The, the trench line at 4:1 is eight feet above the control elevation. I mean, that's, that is simple. That is a simple thing to do. We know that we have to be able to operate a piece of equipment in between that and the rest of the LME. The rest of the LME is 12 more feet. Keep in mind, the LME is 20 feet from the control up to the property. Eight feet is under the, the, the trench. We don't want anybody in there. So we have to work in that 12 feet. What we're saying is, we could give the property owner five feet of that 12. We take the other seven and tell them you can't put a fence or anything else in there. That's what I'm trying to do.
So you're trying to come up with a rationale as to how to determine how much is left and how much has to go?
Yes.
A rationale.
So that the engineer could.
Okay, so, let me ask staff, is this? Is, is, is this a good common denominator?
I think it's a compromise, but because you own, you have full rights to that LME, that lake maintenance easement, you have full rights to access it and dictate what goes in it. So ultimately, this is a policy decision. The, the policy in April was to clearcut the entire LME. I'm gonna tell you right now, if we go out to Daniel's Preserve on both of those ponds that are out there, you're gonna have a lot more than four property owners that will be irate if we clearcut the LME. But, to that, what, to that point, the, those plans were already completed. You know, we, we're working under the impression of, you know, how can we work with a compromise with the property owner and maintain maintenance in the future? You are gonna have 90% design plans of FY25 ponds here shortly, and if that's the new, if that's the new policy you wanna make, and we clearcut the entire LME, we can, we can put that in there.
Either we enforce what we have, or we change it. There's, because I, I'm not, I'm, I'm really reluctant to do exceptions, just because it's almost impossible to regulate and govern. So I can't tell one person I'm making an exception, somebody else that I'm not, even if I can justify. It's not how we should be managing. So we either manage what we have today, or we adjust it to fit these circumstances that we're seeing. So if we change it to seven feet or, or whatever, let's make that decision, what we think is reasonable, or else there's no point of setting policies if you can't.
If Gateway was new or younger, I would agree with this, but we're way, that water's way over the dam, way over. And we're now trying to go back and correct stuff that should have been corrected years ago, because we've had knowledge, we have staff that's not present staff, but some present staff have been here for many, many, many years.
But is there a minimum?
And this is.
I think that's what I'm saying, is, is there a minimum that we need? Because that's what you're asking for, I think.
That's what, that's what I'm basically saying.
Then let's figure out what the minimum is, and let's go with that.
And that's what I'm trying to say.
And change the policy to the minimum.
That's, that's what I'm trying to do. At some happy medium, that we don't go out there and have half of Gateway matter to hell at us, that for the hell of it, because of a 20-foot clearcut, we take everything down inside that.
And the only exception I would say is, we, so Tony, this is where, like, we say, our, here's our threshold from seven to 12 feet. Um, we expect the minimum to be adhered to. However, there may be circumstances that require that distance to be 12, and the district may require you to make adjustments to that.
But we have that. The LME's 20. So we, we have that language.
What I'm saying, but if we set the minimum, we just also need to leave the door open in case there is some type of circumstance where we need more than what we, what we said is our minimum. And we could have Tony draft that or whatever.
I, I just know right now, Doug, that if we would follow that policy to the T, and go back to the ponds that we have done here before, you will have Gateway matter than that.
Well, we can't afford to.
Because you've got so many trees to take out of the LME and other.
So what's the motion? Let's move forward.
And then I would add, and I would add that exotic or invasive, because they're two different things. It doesn't matter, they come out.
They come out no matter what.
Period. So like those invasives or exotics, they come out. So like those ficus tree, no matter, it didn't matter where they located, invasive, exotic, just remove it.
So can you, can you articulate the, the motion to what is the minimum, Tony?
And what I would suggest that when, that the board, based upon whatever action is taken by the board, that some graphic be prepared. Do this, don't do that. Or, you know.
Well, I drawn a picture that was showing.
Yeah, to give an example, so we can see it, uh, depending upon what the board's action is dimensionally and say.
Well, Tony, your problem with that is, is that graphically, you, you would have to have multiple deals. Because first of all, if it's a 4:1 slope, it's not eight feet. Or, I'm sorry, if it's 4:1 slope, it's eight feet. If it's 5:1, it's 10 feet.
Again, I think it could be graphic that shows that.
You have to show that.
I think you could do that. Figure one, figure two, figure three.
We have an existing point repair policy that has the slope, the exact diagram you showed, Tetra Tech did. We can have them tweak that for this, this policy. If that's the direction you so choose. Now, what I would suggest is that, um, we've talked about this, is you, you need to treat landscaping, and you need to, to treat structures separately. Structures absolutely have to have that encroachment easement policy. They need to apply for a structure. It doesn't matter if they're a foot into the LME or 10 feet into the LME. That needs to be applied for. Landscaping is more fluid.
Yeah, and not just structures, other improvements such as pavers, because they really aren't technically, structures, structure are typically 36 inches above the grade. But anything, anything else of a physical nature that's other than vegetation.
I think when you get the combination of vegetation and fencing, you, you've, you've solved 98% of them.
Yes.
There's some other stuff that people have gone out and put, like decorative, uh, stone walls.
I think we lead that to, we, we let Tony put his.
Worker Chelsea on.
Worker Chelsea. What is the, what's the minimum?
To me, what Chelsea said earlier, seven feet from the trench line back into toward the house. That way, that's a cure-all, whether it's a 4:1 slope, a 5:1 slope, are you hungry, or a 6:1 slope?
So he's hungry.
Thought he was eating at the candy bar.
No, he's just folding.
So, so it, it's uniform if you go to the trench line, and then say it's seven feet back, whether it's seven feet at a 6:1 slope, seven feet at a 5:1 slope, or seven feet at a 4:1.
Does that sound acceptable to you as a minimum?
And, and, I, I.
And you can say no. I mean, that's fine. Push back. This is your job.
There's a standard for a reason. And I agreed with you with your statement to begin with, Doug, where if this is the policy, set the policy and stick to it. Um, you have a 20-foot LME. I, I agree that it's not gonna make people happy, but, uh, moving forward, I would, I would stick to the LME.
I think what Ed's position here is, yes, it would be great to have a standard, but is that the fight we really wanna pick when we may not, when it may not be something that's critical at this point?
I do, you know, there's the, 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 the post-social part, part of me, yes, I agree with that. The other side of me that's business, that has to enforce it, that knows that I'm gonna have to fight on every hill that comes up on this one, because it's not gonna be the same criteria every single time. It's going to change.
So we're giving you seven feet, but we also need to have the language, Tony, that there is, the range is seven to 20? If we leave, isn't it 20?
Well, I, I was just gonna say, looking at the Daniel's Preserve plat, on some of the properties, there's a 10-foot LME on the property, and 10-foot in the lake. So, I mean, the 20-foot LME is not all on the person's property.
That's even more complicated.
Yes.
But my point is, if there are circumstances where we need maintenance, and there's a hindrance that falls within the LME, we reserve our right to say seven foot is the minimum. However, we cannot do our job. We require you to push your fence back within regulation, cut your landscaping, remove your X, Y, and Z.
I personally think that just pushes.
Right, we just give it to him and let staff figure it out as they go.
Because we have to. Or else, all we're saying is, we create a policy, and now we have all these exceptions.
Flavia, the issue is, you gotta be able to bid this stuff.
Yeah.
And to be able to bid it, you've gotta have instructions to get to the contractor, which means this has to be on the drawings when you go to bid. So he knows, I either have to take this tree out, or I don't have to take this tree out.
I mean, the only other exception would be if we go 10 feet, and that holds Daniel's Preserve true.
No, that kills you, Daniel's Preserve. 10 feet into the lake from the, uh, uh, control elevation, 10 feet out to the LME, and you're already at a 4:1 at eight feet.
So that's not measured the trench line.
You don't have any room to even do anything.
Then you don't have any maintenance.
Okay, nevermind. I was thinking.
The, the thing I have is that you, you pick one battle today to fight another one later, because if you do that today, then when I do have to get in there to do maintenance, I have to go fight that fight every, you know, eventually, to say, come take that fence down, move that tree.
You have to go on their private property.
But, but, like, I'll give you this. I'm gonna give you an example of 83. I, I think we can do a better job than this. When we did 83.
83, you know, somewhere.
Maginot Lakes.
Okay.
Clear.
Maginot Lakes. And, and staff, and, and I was one to push for it, because I was in the H.O.A. board then, and I said, I want every, this, this is the time. We're gonna do, we're gonna do it right, and we're gonna do it once. And we had, we had a lot of trees that needed to come down. We had a lot of fence that came down, to the point that our district manager came and said to, to my presidents, to three of them, that fence is not gonna go, that fence is not gonna go, that fence, I'm gonna work around it. And we, as the H.O.A., said, no, you're going to do it, we're gonna work with the district, and we're gonna clear, and we did. We had three people upset. The rest understood, because it, trees go differently. They, they're not a problem today, but they may be a problem two years from now. And we're not expect, so we're not expecting to touch that pond in 10, 15 years, because there's nothing there. But now if you have a tree that either grows too fast or grows too slow, or it's, you, it's just, it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare for staff to ma- naming the vendor to watch it, and if you expect the vendor to always follow, they, they don't care. They will go in private property if it's easy just to go around. And then we're, then those same residents will come to you and say, you're, you tore up my lawn, you tore up my sprinkler system, and, and never, oh, thank you for allowing me to have the tree. And so I, I would have sticked, me personally, I would have sticked what the rule is, which is the, the LME, and then do it differently. If a homeowner wants to keep it, then we'll have him come here and fight for it, and then we make that decision. Instead of us making a decision, we say 20 LME stays clear. If the homeowner gets the letter from, from us, and I think 12 days is not enough, I think it should be 30 to 60 days prior, because we had the ability to do that. Have them come over here, and that could be included in the letter. If you like an exemption, you need to come to the meeting, and, and that's when the decision is made. So put it back on the residence.
But then how's the contractor bid it?
Clear cut.
You're gonna have, you're gonna change it.
Clear cut. Yeah. Well, not, well, not with the existing ponds, because those have already been planned and bid, and.
Well, my point is.
Future bidding, future bidding, we adhere to the.
Clear cut.
Okay, okay. Let's, you do that, and you're going out, you're gonna go to every owner on the LME. You're gonna, first of all, you're gonna stake the LME. It's gonna cost us a mint to stake that.
We already do that. We already do that.
It's, it's, it's after the fact, Flavia.
No.
Right now, we're staking the LME as we go along. At the time we're doing the bidding, we don't know where that LME is at. We got an idea. If the pond's at controlled elevation, it doesn't take anybody to go out there and go 20 feet. That's easy. It's a no-brainer. But if that works, that's, that's the problem we got. But that means we'd have to go out to every one of these ponds coming up, which we've got about 12, 15 left. We better go out to these people right now, and let them know, anything within 20 feet, right now, though, all the ponds are at control. They're at control. Right now would be the perfect time to put a notice out. Anybody, anybody that's on a pond that's coming up, and you've got anything in the LME, take it out now.
We need to make a decision or move on. Like table this or.
Yeah. Cause I, I understand what you're saying and I, if Gateway were a lot younger, I'd totally be the first to agree to this. But it, it's not that way now.
Let them come to us. Let's.
Does this have, is there an action needs to be taken on this today because of time sensitivity?
Well, we're, we're just continuing to proceed on those ponds. And when we go and this guy here that's got these three ficus, not withstanding the fact that, of exotics. If they're exotics, we should have never allowed them to be there for the last 25 years. So I, I'm, I'm with the owner on that one. We stepped on our yin yang on that. We should have done, stopped that a long time ago. So don't use the exotic argument right now on that one. If we thought it was bad, why didn't we go tell them it was bad 20 years ago?
Cause we weren't doing work on that pond.
That's, that's, but, but I mean, the fact it turned out to ruin work on the pond is that the LME, if it's a clear cut. Then you've got to go to the people that you may be doing work on and tell them and let them know right now. It's going to come out.
So here's.
Okay, when, 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 when these homes were built, when these properties were sold. Is there 20 feet there? Is there an easement on, on the survey that says 20 feet?
With this guy that has the ficus. When he.
I don't, no, Ed, I don't want a particular one.
Yes.
Tell me.
Yes.
When these homes were built, was there 20 feet on the survey?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, there was 20 feet on the survey, but there were trees in the survey.
If I might help assist you more. The plat has the easements on the plat.
Yes.
When a person buys their, since the plat is a matter of record. Whether they have a survey or not, they're legally on notice that there are easements that encumber the property that give another entity the right to engage in certain activities.
Right.
So that whether they have a survey or not. That's the law in, in the state of Florida. And the Daniels Preserve plat again has a 20 foot LME. Part of it is in the lake. Part of it is in the land that, that people have fee simple title to. In certain areas, it's all over the place in Daniels Reserve, quite frankly, on the plat. So they're on notice that they have. And if they, when they buy property and when they sell it. People, if they get title insurance policy, a title insurance policy will say, we, we will insure against all encroachments. Uh, excuse me, we'll insure against various items. We will not insure against encroachments that would show up by a survey. And then there will be a survey exception says we insure the title except for these encroachments that are in, located on a survey. So if a person gets a survey, they should have either had the trees located. Or if there are other encroachments such as pads, fences, other items. Again, people either do it knowingly in particular for the easements or contractors are notorious for submitting plans to entities, not showing easements. And so the entity says, oh, we got a lot they can build on here.
So can I, can I chime in? So I think that there's a way to get to where you guys are trying to get. So if the intent is a clear cut, what we can do is we can have Tetra Tech include as part of their scope. And sub out the surveying of the LME as they're progressing through design. So it can be staked early on and visuals and videoing and cameras and pictures. We can put the property owner on notice early if you intend to clear cut the entire LME. Now, I think the comment was made back in April was we're, we're investing millions of dollars into these ponds. We need to protect our asset. So I think Ed's, Ed's comment is a compromise for, for the existing ponds that we have right now. I think regardless, any structure needs to be accounted for. And if clear cut is how you want to move forward with the 25 ponds and the, the remaining 15. That's why, that's how we'll proceed and we can get those notices out as soon as possible.
I would be in favor of clear cut. I think our decision that we made a couple of months ago. I under, I understand we're now getting down to the nitty gritty of it. The decision before was, you know, should we do it or should we not? But people, when they bought the property, were on notice that stuff was in there.
They knew or should have known.
Right. And even if it's a new buyer, they knew or should have known. So I'm, I'm going to stick with clear cuts.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I, and, and that's the thing, like, I also believe in everything that was already said. So that's, I believe it's the same resident that reached out to me. And he had mentioned that the trees were there.
2006, 2007.
And they were not there. They were planted. Those are oak, the trees are like right here. So, so.
The new homeowner planted them.
He didn't have any oaks in these yards.
Well, now, the development order does require for oak. I live in the river there. So, so this right here, yeah. So I, I, I'm in favor with the clear cut and um.
Are those oaks or he, he told us that he bought this from Worthington.
Yeah.
20 some years ago and that the, those trees were there.
They were installed between 2006 and 2007, if you look at aerials.
Say it again.
They were installed between 2006 and 2007, if you look at the aerials.
2006 and 2007?
Yeah. So.
Look, look. Oh wait, the trees are not there.
Well, I think.
You see, this is an oak tree.
The, the.
The trees are right here. There's like.
But my point, my point is Flavi with the, the, the decision or the way I'm going is those trees are going to come out on the, on my way anyway. They're going to come out. So that, that's a dead issue. Under any scenario, those trees would come out. I'm talking about the dozen or two dozen oak trees that are sitting out there around that lake right now. That if you make that decision, you're going to go back to the work is done and you're going to cut down the tree. We're going to look like idiots. We're going to look like idiots with the owners. Just anyone idiot.
But we're not going back to what's been done. We're looking forward to the next.
Okay, so the next job.
What's, what's current work now and work moving forward?
Yes.
Well, I got to retune it like.
Then Chelsea's, then Chelsea's deal.
Unless.
In three years, look how much they grew.
I know, I've had flak.
And Chelsea's deal is that going forward, we will have the engineers, part of the design stake out the LME. And then we will give a letter to the owners of those lots and the president of the HOA and the cam. And letting them know it's coming. Get rid of all this.
And the only exception is.
And it's not, it's not on the contractor to remove those trees. It's on the owner.
And the exception is if there are any historical ponds where staff determines maintenance is an issue because of easement encroachment. We would ask them or we would take care of that.
Well, they clear that because it's a problem.
Ed, you just, you just said something that I have concerns with because we have historically paid for trees to be removed out of the LME. And so I think the point of the notice is to give the homeowner the opportunity to remove it. And then at the, tell them that when the contractor mobilizes.
Do that with a changeover.
It's coming out.
Don't bid it that way. Don't bid that. Why, why are we using the, the, the half a dozen people that have trees or the dozen people that have trees? That should be paying to take them off. Why is their neighbors paying for it when they don't do it? That's not right.
Tony, can we, can we charge them for it? Can we remove it and then charge them?
It, it ends up being the, the, the special assessment process is the only way.
Yeah.
If, unless we had a rule that talked about them.
It's kind of like what we did at Stoneberg. We didn't, we didn't make them pay for it. I gave it greens. I think we had a few. We didn't make, we didn't make them pay for it.
We chalk it up under site work and it's, you know, it is.
Let's, let's cross that bridge later. Let's start.
Well, now we need to know who paid for it.
Well, so, so then.
Well, as far as, I think we want to get down to some direction. So my direction would be clear code, clear cut.
Going forward.
Going forward.
We adhere to the standard that's currently on the books.
No exceptions.
And what, and what we didn't think.
Right.
That's suicide.
And then, and then when we send out the letter, 30 to 60 days. We include a language that says if they want an exception, they will come to the meeting and then we can decide in there. And you're probably going to have five.
There we go again. But if we do that.
But you give them an option. I mean, I want to.
We don't tell anyone they could come in for an exception. The rule is the rule. If they want to press it, they could, they have, they reserve the right to come into the board. We don't tell people. I don't, I would tell my kids, I'm going to punish you, but you can come back and talk to me about negotiation.
I take it back. I take it back.
Okay, so. I think, I think I'm clear, clear cut.
So what we're doing is we're basically having a motion that rescinds, rescinds the April motion.
No.
No.
No, the April motion had exceptions in it.
No, it's clear cut everything. No.
We need to go back and read it because I can't.
I read it. It has exceptions in it.
What did the, you remember?
It says, as we previously talked, and it was no dialogue in the minutes of what that was. It just says, as we previously agreed, other than that, all deals come out.
Well, just make a new motion and whatever we say today, we'll.
Carol made the motion, right? You going to make the motion?
Yes, that the policy is clear cut.
And go forward basis.
Clear cut the LME.
LME.
To the.
Clear cut the LME.
Clear cut the LME. It's our policy going forward.
Okay.
Well, that's one. I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Let's go. Vote on favor.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
That was fun. Four to one.
Okay. Anything else for the public works monthly report?
Yeah.
Nice job.
Just as a side note, you'll see there's more of an executive summary on my front page. If moving forward, I'm just going to try to give you our bottom line upfront of what's going on in public works. So that you get the cliff notes of what's happening, where projects stand and where I'm at with some of my manning for recruiting efforts.
Here's, here's what I would love to see in our, in our committee reports. And, and I love this, the update where it's very high level and it's, it's updates. I need to know where we're at risk or what your concerns are.
Okay.
You know, I, I think if you come here and, and you know, we're 90% completion on 70%, that's great. But are there anything that this board needs to know as far as risks or concerns or watch items? Doesn't have to be on fire, but if there's some smoke, just tell us so we're aware. Cause we're going to hear from someone or.
You guys know about it before me most of the time.
In a month, yeah. In a month, we might hear from staff as like, well, this would have been a nice note. And, and you may not have anything, but that's what I would love to see in all the committee reports is if there's any, just watch item or anything like that. Absolutely.
I'll, I don't know for you guys, but to me, like reading the board pack, there's a lot of like duplicate information. I think that at one point we wanted it like natural resources to compile their report and then crack, practice and write their report. But I feel comfortable with just having the one. I don't think I necessarily want the mainscape report anymore or the water sample report anymore. If you can just convince everything into one report.
Just that one.
What?
That one summary. That summary.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just public works. I mean, come when Laura's, I still need everything else for now because it's financial and I mean, it's not, it's not the same. We're not talking about the same thing.
So all of, like all of the reports from Superior and.
Yeah, so, so.
Marescape.
I have no problem with staff and I think they should continue. Elke does hers, Carrie does hers, Scott does his, provide that to Daniel. Daniel can just do a summary.
If somebody wants to come look at it.
Exactly. If we, if we want to dig it out, then. Exactly. But otherwise I'm comfortable with just the summary that Daniel was.
It should be, and I'm not sure if we do this today, but there should be a file or a folder, maybe the new SharePoint site. Where the board has access, we can go on any, any time in a, in the week and we can see weekly detailed reports. But in the board book, we don't need, we don't need that. But that's, I know that you're.
I've already got it, I've already got it established for you. I gotta do some training with the, with the staff first and then I'll be reaching out to do some training with you all to get you to a point where your SharePoint's happy.
So ultimately this will be a, what we've done the last month, what's future forward thinking and what's on fire.
Yeah.
Okay. Except Laura. Laura gets all the numbers. Anything else for public works?
Uh, two does for getting that signed, it jumped. The guard check that we like to run in there. I mean, now we're not lighting fast. The repair and, and sign. I know we got some issues with the size of the signage. Nevertheless, actually.
Has been hit since.
Back, back, back to the ponds on one issue. When we run into where we were short sheeted by the original developer on sewer lines, storm sewer lines going to the lake. That are like we saw out there 10, 15 feet shore.
Yep.
And we then put one to one slopes. No more. Extend the pipes on out and get them to where we have uniformity on four to one or five to one slopes everywhere.
Yeah, I agree with you. That, that's going to, that'll cut down on the erosion overall.
Cut it. We, we made it vertical, almost a vertical deal. It's dangerous.
Okay. Anything else for public works?
Good.
Thank you. And last but not least. Yeah. Mr. Manoli with utilities. Anything for Mr. Manoli?
I have none.
I have nothing.
No. This is where you.
He sat through the whole.
This is where you swiftly step away from the.
This, this deal on the uh, uh, storm sewers that these divers are finding, it's an extra 7,000 feet of pipe.
That's public works.
Okay, that's, I should have asked them there.
Okay.
The issue is, we need to find, we need to find out where the hell that's at. That is a lot of pipe to be missing.
They're provide, I believe they're providing reports and then we're going to incorporate.
So Bob, you have any question for Austin? Cause I know he wants to go home.
No, no, I don't. No, I'm not.
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
All right. I do have a couple of additional items that I just want to go over. The, I just want to do a quick reminder that two of you have done your ethics course. You have a deadline for that. Please make sure.
I'm doing that next week.
Well, it's actually the end of the year, but we recommend anybody who's running for reelection, they finish it by July.
Uh, I signed you up and you have a deadline. You only have like 45 days to, from the day I sign you up.
Okay, I, I went, I went online and looked at mine and I think mine's up like April 1st. So I've got to get mine done next week.
Please.
If you fail the quiz, you got to redo the whole thing.
Yeah.
Hey, look, it doesn't take any more time to, to do it than for my husband to play golf.
So who's done them already?
I have. I only have Carol's. If anybody else.
Have you done?
I, I have extended mine.
So how long did it take to do it?
I got something.
I think it's four hours.
So the point is you, you need to finish the.
I did my ethics thing.
Okay.
People are always in the front.
Additionally.
Hey, I did too.
Moving on.
Additionally, uh, you all tasked Tony to work with myself regarding the letter to the POAs for flop. That letter is drafted. Uh, we have a tentative, I have not sent it out yet. We were going to hard mail it to the property owners. We have a, my plan was to have a staff meeting with them to kind of just get them apprised of what the issue is. And then have, offer a formal meeting with you all. Uh, I don't really want them coming in cold turkey and asking a bunch of questions when we can try to work through that. So, um, I don't know if there wants to be a designated rep from the board to attend that meeting. I think it's two weeks from today or on a Monday. So if anybody wants.
Send me the invite for that.
I will, I will, tomorrow, yes.
So you're starting with Fairway Lakes first?
Yes.
And just as a sidebar, I did meet with one of the owners at Skinny Dog, they had no idea.
Oh, I know.
No idea whatsoever, and they were trying to understand, well, what, what would we need this for? And I, I briefly touched on the money, but they're like, well, like, what would we have to, what, what would, what would the POA focus on? Like, you know, monuments and this and that, and they're like, oh.
So it's April eighth at two is what I, what I've got penciled in, so I don't know if there wants to be a designated rep from here, but anyway.
Well, I think it should be one of you three.
Well, I think the, the big thing is if you're gonna have, if you're gonna have a follow-up meeting with us on it, then having staff, uh, you're totally right, you've got to get them up to speed, because like, I found, I talked to, I talked to one who's very knowledgeable and his deal was, no, hell no, I want no part of it. Because they don't care. They don't, they can't see beyond the end of their nose that one of these days, that stuff's gonna start falling apart.
I don't mind.
Okay, so Flavio will send you the invite as well as Tony.
And then, uh, so you, you gotta get them educated.
Yep, and as an aside, Ed and I are working with Francis Iannucci with, um, Daniel's Preserve to try to see if we can get that.
County.
Yep.
Hi.
Okay, so that's that item. Um, had a harebrained idea when, uh, talking about the master concept plan for the Commons about, um, I know when I was, had my, at my time at Fort Myers Beach, we had an outreach center. Something to consider to partner with the Sheriff's Office to potentially put an outreach center at the Commons. I just, I want you guys to chew on that, think about it. Um, I think that would be a great added benefit to.
What is an outreach center?
Uh, where the Sheriff's Office, you know, they, they have an office, a designated office there where, like a satellite location and where, you know, the residents could go.
I think it's awesome idea.
I, I, no thank you to that.
Okay, and then what do they do there?
Uh, education, uh, they host classes, they, I mean.
All the programs that we do in here, so like social media, self-defense, they do programs for the, the kids.
Okay, so this would be in the new administrative building?
In addition to the building.
It would be in, it would have to be in addition to. So it's, it's, again, it's just an idea that I thought, um, would be a great added benefit to the community. The closest Sheriff's Office is off of Daniel's, um, in Six Mile, so.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, in season with JetBlue and everything, it.
Do they do more than outreach? Does it, is, does it, it's, it's almost termed as a satellite location?
Not, no.
I mean, it's not a holding or, or detainment, but it's completely outreach.
So think about it, just something to ponder.
You haven't pitched that yet, have you?
Uh, I mentioned it to, um, the captain and, um, sent it, I think he sent it along the chain, but nothing formal. Just say, hey, would you guys be interested in this?
I love it, I think it's fantastic.
So, and I think Flavio's gonna reach out to one or two of her contacts to just, you know, again, pitch the idea, see if.
Yeah, they said they're ready for meeting.
Oh, okay, good.
But we would technically, if, if there is an outreach center, it would be our building that we would lease or, or whatever.
So you just let me know when.
Uh, maybe a gateway security and law enforcement outreach, like whatever we.
Yeah.
Because I, I want us to be thinking about while we're talking about this too, is thinking about our needs in the community. You know, whether we're at a point where we may wanna look at having our own in-house security, you know, Rover or especially when you have administrative building, you're gonna, uh, in the, in the Commons, we're, we're gonna need some oversight, we need some oversight.
You are biting off a huge chunk.
Huge, yeah, right.
What's, what's big about that?
We'll talk about it.
We'll talk about it.
All right, so there, that was.
You're not making a motion, are you?
Yeah.
Oh, thank God.
Yep. Uh, okay, so I emailed you all, um, I hope you had a chance to read about this turn lane. That the, um, is a direct result of the conversations that you all directed staff, um, to meet with all of the, all of the parties, um, for the traffic congestion at the schools. The elementary school actually took action and, and with the school district contracted with, um, Johnson Engineering to do this design. It's a turn lane, they're hoping to do it, have it under construction and completed this summer.
Just the high school?
This is the elementary school right here.
Can you tell me where it starts and where it stops?
This is soccer drive right here.
Yes, so it would be the entire.
Right, like if you come out here, when you turn right.
So you immediately turn right, you're on that turn lane.
So from the, their entrance, from one entrance to the other?
Yes.
So, um, we have some issues with it.
Sorry, it's from soccer drive is right here. It's in the pond, see the ponds.
Just parallels the pond.
So, yeah, from soccer drive to the entrance.
Oh, okay, go on the other.
Okay, so they did some sewer work, um, and the force main is outs, fortunately, the force, the force sixteen-inch force main is outside of the travel lane of the auxiliary turn lane. Unfortunately, the irrigation main, sixteen-inch irrigation main, is underneath the turn lane. Now, in a normal situation, um, we would require the school district to move those outside of the pavement. There are a couple of options. Ultimately, staff is looking for the direction from the board on what risk you're, you're willing to take.
But wait a minute, this is county road.
This is county road.
If that's county's road, we just went through that, they aren't going to allow any encased.
They will, I had that same conversation and I asked the same thing, Ed.
So it's no over here, but yes over here.
Ultimately, it's the district's utility lines, it's their decision, is, is the response.
Be a part of the family.
Joe Biden working for them.
So. So what, what would be the proper procedure is to have them move the lines delayed a year and risk the chance of.
Not doing it?
Yeah, because we're exposed with the county.
So here's, here's the thing. The compromise, which I sent in the email, is to, um, I actually have an email from Johnson, so there are two options that they've proposed. Uh, one of, one of them is to install bell restraints, which our engineer does not recommend, there would be really no added benefit. But option two, which is one that you all saw in my email, was to, um, installation of flowable fill concrete. That would give some protection. The issue, the main concern from staff is the vibrations of the compaction and what that does to that reuse line. Now, if you put that flowable fill six inches a foot, whatever it is, that, it's like Jell-O, it helps to absorb the vibrations.
You're gonna open up the pipe and put flowable fill around it?
The, the contractor, uh, the school district's dime would do that. Now, again, during construction, if there were any issues, that's on the school district. Now, the conversation I've had with them, they would be open to warranting it for a year. Beyond that, the district would be exposed if there were any, anything to those lines. Now, mind you, we're exposed if anything happens to those lines outside of that roadway.
Why not just lay a parallel pipe outside the line of the, or the forty-five degree angle of the edge of the road?
So.
Shut the other one down, yeah.
Uh, again, we're talking.
It's too, too, too risky.
Permitting.
Do I do?
Design and permitting. And that takes time, and again, the school district is wanting to complete this, this summer.
But we've got risk if we allow that pipe to be underneath that road.
Absolutely.
And it's not worth it, not worth it, just tell them to move the pipe.
Well, for what they're gonna expend putting in this concrete?
Yeah, they're already digging it up.
They could probably just put the other pipe in, uh, is it just a time situation?
I believe it's time and cost.
Okay, if we, if we got it done this year, over top of the existing, knowing that they're, they're not putting the Jell-O, but then install the other pipe at a, at a different timeframe.
Well, what you're doing is you're putting the other pipe parallel to this pipe, only out, out of the, out of the way of the road.
But then, but then you cut it off, cut the old one out, delete it.
Yeah.
You're just connecting.
And that way you could do both things and we'd end up with the best idea, which is a.
Now, my only comment to that is the force main's pretty deep, the reuse is more shallow. If you do a parallel line, you're gonna potentially cross over that force main.
Well, a force main now is, you can move. It doesn't have to follow a line in the grain, so we can take it like that if we have to.
But again, that's design and permitting, you're dealing with sewer now.
Well, it's design and permitting, but it's risk on our part going forward.
Agreed.
We got all the risk, they got nothing. I, I tell them, move the line. Why do we want to take the risk? We did all this out here at these other roads for that very issue, it'd be crazy not to do it for this.
I, I would have to lean on our engineers and, and those with expertise to, to come up with a recommendation, I don't feel comfortable.
Ultimately, the, the decision is, do you, you, the flowable fill will work. Do you wanna take the risk beyond the one-year timeframe that the county is willing to warranty it?
No.
And if the answer to that is no, then I know, then I know that I have to tell them, no, the board said move the lines.
Move the lines, you know.
I mean, I, I applaud the action on this because this is something that's really important.
Yes.
Um, and it needs, it needs to be done, I just hope that that, the length of the turn lane is sufficient.
Why, why should we take the risk? I don't, I don't see any value.
Now, here's, here's another suggestion. Would you be open to if the school district took the responsibility of any damage to that line in perpetuity if it stayed in the same location?
Oh, I like that.
I would, yeah. I'm acceptable, that.
I mean, we don't care as long as someone eats the risk.
That'll, that'll go until their attorney reads it.
Well.
Yeah, you, you can pull that off, they, go do it.
I don't think that they're open to that, but it's, it's an alternative.
If they would, I, I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I would be fine with that too.
For just, for just the line that's underneath the roadway, just the portion of the reuse.
Yeah, just where the exposure's at.
Otherwise, move the lines.
Right.
Okay, that's the direction I needed, thank you.
Yeah.
And this is a sixteen-inch?
I believe so, yeah, yes, it is, reuse is sixteen. All right, um, I have the letter for the POA if anybody wants to read it, I can pass that around, but that's all of the updates that.
Is this the one that's going to?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, send it to us, this is the one going to.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll make a copy.
We finished it today, most of it's your language, Tony. All right, that's all I have.
My one page?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, say about this one.
You didn't say what? Email it, email it.
Email it.
And I did get on one page.
You're like her.
Hi, Tony.
Small font.
Tony, I'm very hungry.
Very, very short, real quick.
You got great.
The deeds of the district, I followed up with Charles Mann, we're having a call next Monday to try to wrap up the last deeds that we have strikers on. Uh, I think he's probably been assigned to a bunch of other items. I'll skip on down then to the infrastructure easement ownership identification. Uh, one more tract and it's owned by PPCA, but I'll get with Bob on that and also Will Cronin and Reed over at Passarella. Drafted up, Janopi, hopefully Monday. Uh, probably tomorrow, actually, now. So I was doing, I was researching while, during the board meeting. FPL easement consent to use, we had a good conversation with FPL to the extent you can have good conversations on consent of use agreements. They agreed to lengthen to ninety days, the time within which the district would need to move anything out of the easement if it was in their way. They had thirty days in there, uh, they agreed to ninety. And the only other hangup is having them named as additional insured, so we've been trying to work with the insurance carrier, provider, see how we can address that. Otherwise, the, the discussion with FPL was if you want to try to change this language, we need to send it to legal and risk management. And that would probably take a year or two. So we're, we're working on, Chelsea's working on for, uh, ways to get the carrier or some other carrier to provide the necessary coverage that we need. The, uh, contract copying machine, I, I'm gonna ask the board next month to file the lawsuit. They keep sending invoices and bugging us. My approach is the contract is terminated, we don't have a contract, we don't owe you money, you owe us money. Charge your rent. Uh, it, it's just been, plus Laura needs extra room in her office, that's the.
Yes.
Yeah, rent for storage. The, uh, board policies and procedures manuals, I had finalized my comments and then, uh, based upon some comments that I think Marty made about making sure we have procedures for subcommittee committee members attending other meetings. Chelsea had a good idea to incorporate that in the overall policy, not have a separate standalone. So hopefully we'll bring that to you relatively shortly. The, uh, archived documents, Mary's talk, Stony Brook Track B, that's by the board. Dissolved POAs, I did a one-page summary, small font, small margins, I think, again, Chelsea got a kick out of that. Hopefully we can, uh, and what I've also done, I've gathered more material, so when we have the first meeting with the Fairway Lakes Office Park people, I'll have some of the documents from the eminent domain action to give them a sense of what they can do.
Okay.
Uh, what they need to do. Atlantic Southern Paving, that's taken care of. The AGO has been submitted, uh, to, and I appreciate Katie Berkey's comments on that, that's been sent off to the Attorney General's Office. You know, the service provider agreement, uh, memorandum regarding practices, the gate houses. Again, goal is to get that before PPAK on April fourth and then to the board. The Stony Brook Monument signage, uh, I don't have any, I haven't had any luck finding additional documents about the district having any interest in it, but I have just Infomark to look at all the requisitions from back in the two thousand and three bond issue for Stony Brook. Thereafter, when requisitions were made by the developer to get paid for facilities, to see if there's anything in those requisitions addressing that wall.
Okay.
But I'm inclined to say the district does not have any interest in it at the present time.
I, I will, I will say this, I had a, a conversation with Joe yesterday, yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah, and because he had mentioned and also Margaret that they did have the document, so I said, okay, provide it to us. Chelsea had followed up with two different emails saying, hey, you say you have it, provide it to us. But then it came to the point that I don't necessarily think those documents exist because we didn't look for it, but they're willing to maybe just stop looking for it and just create the document and do an easement or whatever we need to do. So my direction to him yesterday was, you go back to your board, figure it out what you want and then come to us. So.
Okay.
I think they just had their meeting on Monday, I don't know if they took that into consideration, given that I spoke with him yesterday, it was Wednesday. So I said, go to your board, figure it out what you want and then come to us. If you wanna keep it, if you wanna do easement, if you wanna do that, whatever it is, one voice, come to us, tell us and we'll go from there.
Okay, I'll be on standby then.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say that, yeah, just let, let them figure out what they want and then, um, and then we can.
Unless I get something different from Infomark, I can pass that one, otherwise I'll.
Yeah, otherwise, yeah.
Daniels Parkway Apartments Utility Issues, Chelsea touched on that. We have a resolution with regards to, uh, one aspect of it, the upsizing, the discussion was the upsizing of the potable line. Is it, was it twelve inch, Chelsea? Uh, normally a ten-inch line.
Where?
The district's utility line, the potable, uh, into Daniel's Parkway Apartments.
Sixteen.
Yeah, but currently it's.
Ten.
Ten, and the discussion was ask them to upsize to sixteen, loop into Lee County on Daniel's Parkway, I mean, on, uh, on Dennis Parkway, and the district would pay the differential. So we've had positive discussions with their attorney. She's going to initiate the drafter a template of a upsize agreement, I, I've done them before, but she was willing to do that and.
Oops.
Uh, we, I have like weekly calls with her to try to come up with ways to address that, and the other remaining issue is irrigation system, so.
I do have a conversation with, uh, Fran Iannucci on tomorrow about.
Okay, good.
They did reach out.
Okay, very good. Yeah, we suggested that Daniel's Parkway folks contact Daniel's Preserve people. And so that's, I have seen any questions from the board?
Yeah.
No? Okay.
But since you, uh, we alluded to Stony Brook, we all got, uh, the email, um, about the Stony Brook O and M agreement. Did anything happen or did, what did they decide to do at their meeting? It was sent the same day, they were gonna have a meeting that night and they wanted to know if they could shorten the time to give notice and stuff like that.
I had a conversation with Joe on that topic as well yesterday, um.
And where does it sit, I guess?
I think I would like for Joe to go back to the board.
Okay.
And then follow up with us, I, I don't necessarily think it's my place to just go and have conversations. Because I had a conversation with one board member, I understand.
Okay.
I, I, so I think it's, the ball is on their court, the only thing that I, I.
But there's nothing we need to do.
The only thing that I was very, uh.
No, that's it.
And to be clear, you all received that email, I was not included, but fortunately, fortunately, I was forwarded that email.
So the only thing that I did ask was, please understand that we already started budget. I don't wanna repeat of last year when we had removed this, removed that, and we said, we will, but you need to give us stuff. So that's the only item that I was, I, I strongly asked Joe, so we need to work together, so we have to do what's the right thing.
Yep.
And he agreed that he's gonna understand it, the numbers are gonna stay there, and all I need is thirty seconds before the overhearing.
Moving on.
Got it.
Yeah.
Nothing else?
Deal with one.
Yeah.
Agenda management, if you're ready. Um, the, we don't really have anything, um, scheduled for your April workshop unless you guys wanna have a budget, we can do that. And then President's Council Workshop scheduled for the end of April, uh, those are the, really the big ticket items that, uh, we thought would be best, uh, if you have anything.
One, one quick thing, so the gentleman that spoke earlier, I, um, was very surprised that when we send stuff out, they're, they're only going, that, that email's only going out to those with, um, with accounts, that's not true? That's not true?
No, because I, I have City of Fort Myers water and I got it.
Okay, nevermind.
It requires them to sign up for it, and we had this conversation when Castle needs to be stopped.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, Randy sent me a message during the meeting when we were talking about that earlier, and he said that all of the HOAs and the CAMs in each of the communities, the HOA presidents and the CAMs in each of the communities, he put their email addresses into constant context, so whenever something gets pushed, it does get to them.
Was my point.
Yes, it, they're, so they're not passing it on if they're not getting it.
I heard, surprise, surprise. Ignore.
Okay. And as far as, um, the, the, starting the budget stuff, I was wondering if we could start with a organizational chart and kinda tell us what your thoughts are going forward now as far as people.
Yep, we can do that.
So, because that's one of the big things that is a variable in, in the budget. And so I'd like to start with, instead of starting with projects this year, I'd like to start with people this year. And, or, I'm sorry, not people, positions.
God, we can do that.
Anything else in the agenda management book?
Nope, no.
Supervisor comments?
Oh, is this the next board meeting, is that before or after the, the big pow-wow with the Pelican people?
Like the day, uh.
No.
Day off? The financial arrangement.
Yeah.
I think it's the day off.
The day off.
Or the day before, it's the day ever.
Okay.
So supervisor comments, Bob, what's that with you?
Uh, first of all, we talked some months ago.
Day before.
It's the third.
Digitizing the records redemption room up here, are we making any progress on that?
No, we have not.
Do you need any direction, are we okay, it's gonna happen or?